Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council, City Council Candidates Forum. This is a forum for District Five candidates and at-large city council candidates. The format for today is that we're from ten fifteen until eleven ten, we're having, or eleven fifteen thereabouts, we're having the District Five candidates present their ideas and to interact and answer questions from the residents. Some are, were questions that were sent in by residents prior and some we expect to hear live. During this meeting, we asked that everyone during when someone else is speaking to please be on mute and that all of your questions, please wait to be recognized by our facilitator today, Angel Howell, and he will call your name and let you know what order you're supposed to be in. Angel, he's, he has next to his name facilitator. And that is the person who's helping us manage the room today. The, one of the main reasons that the GMNC wanted to hold this final forum or is because within the District Five primaries, one of the things that we saw unfortunately was the extreme low voter turnout. We have a high number of people in District Five who were actually registered to vote by households, but there were less than actually three hundred individuals who actually voted in the primary. And that includes both by mail in ballots as well as in-person voting. And in order to, for our voices to actually be heard, we have to realize we have to go to the, actually put something in the ballot box. No one else is going to take care of it for us. It's all of our individual responsibilities. And as part of what makes, you know, our city work. Tell, making sure that the people who here, who want actually to be voted in, that they're listening to us. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague David Halbert to start us off. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Fatima, and thank you all for being here. We really appreciate it. As Fatima said, you know, this is a part of our work at GMNC, making sure that we have a robust civic dialogue here in Greater Matapan. Once again, my name is David Halbert. I am, work member here at Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council and proudly serve as the co-chair of our Economic Development Subcommittee. I am really excited that we're going to be able to have this today, especially considering that this wet weather has caused so many hiccups as we've been trying to get this going off the ground. And it's wonderful to see so many people here with us today. We have over thirty participants live. And those of you who may be seeing this as recording, we thank you for taking the time and wanting to find out a little bit more about the folks who are seeking to represent us as a community here on the Boston City Council. As Fatima said, we're going to begin this morning with candidates for the District Five seat. That's the seat currently held by Councilor Ricardo Royal. We have our two finalists who are going to be in November's election, Enrique Pepe and Jose Ruiz, and we're going to give each of them two minutes to introduce themselves and talk about why they're running and then we're going to move into our questions period. As stated, we have some questions that were submitted prior to today's event that we're going to be referring to. And of course, there are folks here in our audience and those who have questions can please feel free to use the raise hand function or to put their questions in the chat, whichever you feel most comfortable with. And we're going to do our best to get to as many questions as we can. Each candidate is being given one minute, one minute for their responses. We're going to try to keep that tight in the interest of fairness and time. And with that, I'm going to turn it over. We're going to start with Mr. Pepe and allow him to introduce himself. So Enrique, floor is yours.
Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you so much to the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council for hosting this. It's, it's a pleasure for me to speak to residents this morning, especially as Fatima mentioned, to a neighborhood where we need to increase voter turnout. And the reason why, and the reason why I'm doing this is because I want to make sure that I'm giving back to this city that has already given to my family so much. My family got here from the Dominican Republic in the nineties and was placed in the Boston Public Housing Authority in Charlestown. Fast forward ten years after that, they were evicted. They were evicted because of eminent domain. They were proposing to tear down the buildings, but it never happened. They were about to move to the Merrimack Valley where it was a lot more affordable to live, but one BHA employee helped us through that process. And as the oldest son, the one that spoke English, I had to serve as the translator for my parents. And then, you know, work with that BHA employee to figure out where were we going to live. So we got here to Roseland. My parents are still in that first floor of a triple-decker. And now I'm actually raising my own two kids. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old and a six-month-old with my wife here. And because of that one BHA employee that helped my parents, I knew that city government could do good work. So I decided to get involved at a very young age. I started interning for former city councilor Tito Jackson, doing constituent services work in Roxbury where I actually helped a family that was a victim of violence and they lost a loved one and helped them find resources to pay, fully pay for the funeral expenses. I went to work for Congressman Joseph Kennedy where I actually helped thousands of residents with their social security and Medicare case work that was being backlogged. I went to work for Mayor Walsh as a Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Liaison. And I helped three families from being evicted, similar situation as my family by city realty. And I teamed up with City Life and Vito Urbano. And most recently, I served as the Director of Neighborhood Services for Mayor Ru where I was able to see where were the gaps in city services. I was able to work with those city heads, the city department heads and figure out, okay, what, what is missing from the community? And what can I do to help better it? So I installed the weekly neighborhood coffee hours so that we can bring city services to the neighborhoods and not make families go back into the city. And that's thank you. And I, and I say all that because I'm ready to give back to the city. This is the city that raised me. I want to make sure that as residents of Matapan, as residents of District Five, you feel that you have a counselor that's going to give you a hundred percent. And that's what I'm willing to do and ask for your support. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz.
Morning, everybody. Before I introduce myself, Myrtle Huggins, you're in my prayers. I love you. Get better soon. I know you're at the hospital. I know a lot of people calling you. Get better. Take care of yourself. She's a Matapan leader for many, many years and she had a heart episode last week conducting a meeting. So I'm thinking of you, Myrtle. My name's Jose Ruiz. I consider myself a son of Boston. My mother is Doña Pablo Yola. She's one of the founders of Villa Victoria. My mom is an Afro-Latina. At a very young age, I walked the path of her towards, what you call it, towards human rights and everything else for Latinos. This was expanded as I got older. So I grew up in a community activist homes in the South End. I consider myself a son of Boston because I also lived in other neighborhoods in the city of Boston. And I am comfortable walking anywhere in the city of Boston. At a young age, I was a doer. I was taught not to talk so much. And when something made you angry, once you were done being angry, you did something about it. I wondered why the kids in the South End couldn't play together this, when it came to baseball and sports. Spanish kids played with Spanish kids, black kids played with black kids, et cetera. So at the age of twenty-six, I found this South End baseball, which is one of the most famous little leagues in the city of Boston. During that time, I became the youngest president of Villa Victoria at the age of twenty-four. I ran it out of near, excuse me, I took it out of near bankruptcy. And I brought it into, back into black and into prosperity. I'm the former director of the agency. I've run budgets. I'm a former regional administrator of the Boston Parks Department back in the eighties where I was told I led up to fifty-one million dollars in park renovations. Then I wanted to attain my next goal of going into law enforcement. And I was in Boston Police Office for twenty-nine years. For, for actually from two thousand and six to two thousand and fourteen, eight years, I was assigned to Matapan.
Fifteen seconds.
And B three, and I was a community service officer. I was part of, part of the Matapan miracle where I created a lot of progress, not only for children and adults, but also for seniors. So I'm looking for your support and I'm looking for your vote come November seventh.
Thank you both. We really appreciate it. And now we're going to move on to the questions. I'll start with, it's a two-part question that came specifically around economic development. And so the first part, and we'll take each response, two, is a two-minute reply, one for each section. The first is, what do you believe are the top needs of Matapan's small businesses and their owners? And the second part of the question, what policies will you implement to support those needs? Mr. Pepe, we'll start with you for this question.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Halbert. When, when I think about Matapan and the beauty of it, it's, it's truly because of, it's a gateway. The gateway that introduces, you know, residents not only from Milton, but from other southern neighborhoods of the city, of, of the state. So when you, we have an opportunity here to work with the Matapan Main Streets, work with the nonprofit like Matapan Food and Fitness to figure out what is it that the small businesses are lacking? And about two weeks ago, we were in a meeting. We were speaking about several concerns. One, it was the traffic safety. Business owners are concerned about the, the parking situation, the double parking, the diagonal parking, how much that's leading to chaos and it's actually leading residents from not showing up to the businesses as much. So I want to look at a traffic study there to, or enforce parking enforcement so that we can help the influx of, of customers coming in. Two, I want to make sure I'm teaming up with the banks to make sure that those businesses are getting loans at a lower interest rates compared to the rest of, of the, the rest of the city because we, what we know is that when a black-owned business opens up, their, their average rate of going to into foreclosure after opening is eighteen months because they don't have that economic support. So that, that that's the second one. And two, it's making sure that they have access to the resources that the city of Boston is putting forward. It's teaming up with the Small Business Department of the administration and saying, listen, these businesses need more support. That's why I'm happy that even the whole liquor license conversation is happening because we know that in Matapan Square, there isn't enough sit-down restaurants where the residents of Matapan can enjoy to go and support a local business. So that, those are the top three things that I look at.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ruiz.
When it comes to businesses of Matapan Square and listen, even in residence, we got to improve safety in Matapan Square. The reason you don't have more shoppers is enough, not enough people feel safe there, folks. You can walk any time of the day, but once he gets there at night, lighting is poor. What you call it, the people that you don't want to run into are there. During the day, there's a lot of employees to work for the banks and other places that park as close as they can to the businesses because they're afraid to walk to their parks, to the parking lots. So I want to be able to deal, deal with the businesses and residents on how we improve security in Matapan Square. Traffic enforcement is really, really important. Parking enforcement is really, really important. But I want to talk about these bus lanes that I think are being forced down the throat to many of the Matapan residents. I talked to many Matapan residents who don't want the, the, the bus lanes there. I talked to a lot of people who want trees and I go, how do you want bus lanes, add more trees when they're always going to affect one another? So I want to talk about safety. I want to talk about this lot, bus lanes. I want to talk about the bicycle, bicycle lanes too, because they matter a lot of folks. But we also don't see a lot of young people in and around our business who are respectful and everything else. I want to be addressed, I want to address that. I addressed it when I was there. I created youth programs there. I created programs for seniors. And I got a lot of adults together, whether it was cleaning programs, which, whether it was visiting small businesses to keep them alive. And also as part of the Matapan Square planning, they'd like to know where it went. You know, these traffic studies are great, but they've done so many of them. Just remind people, people aren't giving up their cars. We have to figure out how do we condition people to take alternate means of transportation.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. I'm going to turn it over to Fatima for our next question.
Thank you, David. This is, we must start with Jose. Do, go back and forth. This year, the second question is, this year, the city of Boston will pilot its participating budgeting process with four million dollars. Will you advocate increasing it to ten million dollars in next year's budget? These are resident questions, by the way.
Well, first and foremost, I want to remind people that Matapan was victimized by its political leaders. All right. There was the COVID money that was out there. We are the only district that not apply for any money. I also want to remind people that there was a conversation about the federal grant money to add more security cameras and places where five people were shot and forty-seven shots rang out of Edgewater Drive. I want to be able to talk about what makes sense to protect, protect all of us. The one thing I don't want to give up is free money. It bothers me when we're the only district, District Five was the only one that didn't get in the hundred million dollars from COVID. You know, we cannot lose out on opportunities. Fatima lost every shot. If I can get any money into Matapan or any money into the neighborhoods of District Five that enhances the quality of life for our residency of Boston, I, I'm not going to vote for it. I'm going to lead it. It's a big difference. I'll listen to everybody. I am, I am just bound to make sure that Matapan's taking care.
Thank you. Enrique?
So I had, I had lunch with a Matapan community leader about three weeks ago now. And the first thing that she mentioned to me is that she's had enough of politicians telling them what Matapan needs and not asking the Matapan residents what they want. So when I look at an opportunity like the participatory budgeting process, I look at it in a sense of investment. I see an opportunity here for me as a city counselor to sit down with residents, to have those workshops and say, what is it that you need here? Well, how do you want to see businesses, schools, parks, even the simple city services being invested? What is it that you feel like it's lacking from decades of, of just lack of resources? That, so yes, when you, when you speak about advocating for increasing it to ten million dollars, yes, because that's going to only lead to prosperity in a neighborhood like Matapan. And it's going to lead to a sense of investment from the residents. Instead of telling them what they need, they're going to be able to say what they want.
Thank you. David?
Thank you so much. Actually, a little bit of prescience there. Our next community question is specifically about the participatory budgeting process and particularly, excuse me, about the amendment process for counselors. And so one new power of Boston City Councilors is their ability to amend the mayor's budget. How do you plan to engage residents and advocate for constituent priorities during the annual budget process? Mr. Ruiz, we'll start with you for that.
First and foremost, listen, to be a, be, be a good advocate for you, I got to know what the issues are. But I also have to know what issues really bother Matapan. They might be controversial. I understand that sometimes I have to make a decision that not going to be the most popular. So I'm going to give you something for now. I'm tired of our young people feeling like they're poor. And this is something that Mr. Pepe will tell you. You know, one of the, one of the ideas I want to set for, forward is legacy funds. The, what you call it, that enrich lives and helps out a lot of our young people. For instance, you have the Matapan Patriots and they're doing very well in the Pop Warner, what you call it league. When they win, and it looks like they have a good chance of winning and representing Boston, all our kids grab pails and buckets and they go on corners looking for change and everything else. I think it's time that the city look at different ways on raising money to create legacy funds so our kids don't feel like they're poor. Listen, I'm going to look at every budget, every department, from the police department to fire and everybody else and see what makes sense along with them. I've done this a long time. I know when it's wasteful and I know where we can direct funds to, to help Matapan residents and other residents in the city of Boston.
Mr. Pepe?
Yeah. When I think about having the responsibility of amending a city budget, the first thing that comes to mind is the BPS budget. It's the area of the budget that has the most money invested into it. But it's the one area where I feel like the parents are most disappointed in. As I knock on doors on this campaign, have meetings with parents, with just families in general, they feel as if they have to take out their kids out of BPS because it's failing them. There's not enough after-school programs, not enough city, there's not enough counselors for their students. And even the facilities themselves are just outdated. I remember I was on election day, I was, I was at the Conley School, which is outside of the neighborhood. And they had no ACs installed. So the kids were coming out sweating from attending school on almost a ninety-degree day. So when I think about the responsibility of saying, listen, mayor, our BPS budget isn't working. Got to make sure we're rerouting the money or making sure that it's being used appropriately. Because the people of this, of this district are hurting and it's not working accordingly. So that's what I feel like, that's, that's something that I'm grateful that the city council got responsibility for.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time we're going to start with Senator Pepe. Madison Park. What is your knowledge regarding Madison Park? What are the strengths and weaknesses of the city's only vocational tech school?
One minute, please. So I actually went to the high school right next to Madison Park, which is the O'Briant. And when I, I had a lot of friends at the Madison that they didn't even have a selection process to end at that school. So when I was in BPS, it was a, I don't, you could call it a dumping ground for just, for just students that were coming from anywhere. You know, they were, they weren't even aware that they were going to a vocational school when they would get there. So that's the first problem that I see about the process of getting into Madison. We need to take advantage of the fact that we have a vocational school in Boston. And as the candidate that has been, you know, working closely with the labor unions, I actually see an opportunity here to enhance our apprenticeship program. Because at the moment, we are in the modern industrial revolution where we're talking about, yes, the Green New Deal and environmental friendly, but we're not training our students to take on those jobs. So that's an opportunity that I see to fix the Madison Park and to let students know that when they're getting into that school, they're going to get out there with a profession that pays quality money for them to have a living.
Thank you. Senator Ruiz?
I'm all due respect to Pepe and he froze. I don't, we didn't hear about ten seconds of his answer. Do you want to go backwards?
Uh-oh.
I, he didn't. David, did he freeze on your screen?
Didn't. I think it might have just been a localized thing. So that's okay. I think we can move on to your response, Mr. Ruiz. Thank you.
No problem. Okay. Is the only Madison Park High School graduate among the two candidates? I just want to remind people, there was a time where there was vocational opportunities in other high schools. All right. Madison Park was just number one. I also want to let people know that I, I worked for the Boston Red Sox. Seventeen years running their youth and baseball softball programs. I already had relationships with the different trades and I created what was called life skills programs where I was bringing tradespeople who was talking to high schoolers in Madison Park and around the city on encouraging them to get into other trades. No one's going to be a better, bigger advocate for the Boston public schools than Jose Ruiz. Why? Because I have four children and I raised four of the girls. I have seven daughters and a son and six out of the eight graduated from high schools. When people complain about college tuitions being high, what I tell people is you try being A for A. I know the importance of family support when it comes to kids in the public school system. No one's going to be a better advocate for the Boston public schools, including Madison Park.
Thank you so much. So we want to move on to a question in regards to Boston Public Schools, specifically want to extend that and make it more broad. And the question from the community is about BPS specifically. If you became a city counselor, what specific work would you do to improve BPS and its overall outcomes? And for that, we'll start with you, Mr. Ruiz.
I'm so glad you, you picked me first because I, I talk about this all the time. Listen, children want to know they're walking into quality places. They want to know, they want to see quality equipment. They want to be able to see the supplies and everything else. Kids know when they're being under, I'm trying to remember the words, what you call it, when they're not seen at a quality level. I want to be able to see if we can partner up with larger organizations, larger institutions and getting money to build new buildings. Some of our buildings are really old. I don't want air conditioners in our buildings, our, our Boston Public School buildings. It's just a sign that we're poor. You know what I mean? I want new buildings. I want kids to know and feel what Boston pride is. So I want to be able to build partnerships to bring in large companies who are hopefully building new Boston Public School buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Pepe.
You know, one area that I think about as a former BPS student and I was a parent of future BPS students is that the schools that I went to had fairly strong parent councils that not only supported the, the leadership of the schools, but also gave the parents an opportunity to say what was missing from their students' education. But I also realized that it was more the affluent parents that were participating in the parent councils. So I want to come up with a program that either incentivizes the parents that maybe work in a full-time, part-time job during those meetings to come into and give them a, the opportunity to, to speak about what is that they want to see changed. I want to make sure that not only the students feel supported, but the parents feel supported because that's the only line of communication that exists between the parents and the teachers. If the parents don't feel supported, the students definitely won't feel supported. So I just want to make sure that there's between the teachers, parents and students, there's progress being made and there's communication.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Moving on to the next area, we're starting with Senator Pepe. Public safety. City councillors voted to slash the Boston Police Department budget by thirty-one million dollars. What is your insight regarding public safety?
The number one topic that I hear when I'm knocking on doors, having conversations, getting phone calls from residents is the concern for public safety. What I will not support is cutting the budget of the BPD. Because what I actually, if, if you actually learn, if you actually look into what's been happening in the previous few years, city council has actually been approving to increase the budget. But what we need to make sure is that that money is being used adequately in order to ensure that we're supporting our community service officers, that we're supporting those officers that are on the ground, actually knowing what's happening. If we're installing cameras on the streets to make sure that the, the business owners are being supported. I want to make sure that the, if you're leaving your house in Matapan, no matter the time of day, you feel safe. Because that's, that's the only way that we're going to lead to a safer and better quality of life in the city of Boston, not just Matapan. If you don't feel safe, then everything else doesn't matter. So I want to make sure that I'm going in there as an ally to make sure that there is a clear line of communication, but also a line, a line of accountability between the residents and the BPD. Because listen, we're lucky to be in Boston. Boston has one of the best police departments, in my opinion, across the country. And I think that I, I need to be able to go in there and continue to support that.
Thank you. Senator Ruiz?
Yeah, Ben, well said. I'm glad he's paying attention to me to other meetings. I want to remind people that Boston sometimes is painted with the same brush. We have one of the highest favorabilities towards police and here in the United States. It's unfair when we compare the others. I'm big into community policing. Reason I'm big into policing, community policing is because I played Little League for a Boston police officer. They didn't know he was a police officer for a couple of years. I was on a boxing at club. Didn't know for four years that he was a Boston police officer. They mentored me and they convinced me and they encouraged me to get into policing. I ran girl softball program. Most kids didn't know I was a police officer because I wanted to make a difference. I wanted more people of color, more city residents to get into the ranks of police officers. I have mentored over a hundred people under the Boston Police Department. Get ready, Fatima. Sixty percent of them, women. Eighty percent of them, people of color. One hundred percent of them, urban residents. I'm not talking the talk. I'm walking the walk. I expect my class to be the best police commissioner, not in Boston, not in Massachusetts, but entire United States. And the only one way to make them best in this department, keep it at its elite level, is to support them and not cut, not keep cutting them and getting, and upsetting them, but continuously working, working with them.
Thank you. David?
Thank you. So obviously, the city serves as the capital, it's the largest city in Massachusetts, the largest city in New England, as we have a lot of interaction between the city and the state. One of those areas is around transit, specifically mass transit as the largest member of Massachusetts State Transportation Authority. One of the major issues here in the district is around the, what's being proposed to happen on Blue Hill Avenue, the MBTA. And so the question from the community is this. What is your insight regarding this major project, the Blue Hill Ave MBTA project that will encompass several of Boston's inner-city neighborhoods directly and others indirectly because of Blue Hill Avenue's significance as a major thoroughfare? So, Mr. Pepe, we'll start with you on that.
Absolutely. You know, this is a topic that is on top of a lot of people's mind and I, before working for the city, I was working with Transportation for Massachusetts. It's a nonprofit that does just policies across the state. And I was able to work on this a little bit. But I'm a little bit concerned because the bus lane shouldn't be the top priority at that, at, on Blue Hill Avenue. I think Fatima can, can agree that it's the crosswalks that need help. It's that there's not enough time for residents to cross the street. It's that it's very dangerous to leave those diagonal parking spots on the, on the, on the main street's corridor. We need to make sure that we can On the main street's corridor. We need to make sure that we can talk about bus lanes, yes. But we need to make sure that we're prioritizing the safety of the pedestrians that are already crossing those streets. Because that they don't feel, there was a, there was an article released about three months ago that Diaspora. Massachusetts shared on Instagram, I remember, and that there was a. A young lady that is, that was disabled, was trying to cross the street. And from one end to the other end of Blue Hill Ave, and it took her almost an hour to do it safely. So before I talk about bus lanes, I wanna make sure that I speak about the safety of Blue Hill Avenue. Because that's the only way that a bus might work on Blue Hill Avenue. And I'm glad that nothing has been confirmed yet. Because I wanna make sure that if we are entertaining this conversation, we do it in an educational way.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ruiz?
Also, I got muted. I don't know how. But anyway, hey, Matta Pan, here's my, uh, here's my message to you, cause I've said it a couple of times. You feel bullied by special interest groups that are coming in and telling you what to do. Lot of people in Mattapan that I speak to, from Mattapan to Dorchester to the Roxbury, don't want the bus lanes. Uh, guess what? I don't want the bus lanes either. I've seen how they work in other parts of the city. And I continuously remind people that Boston's not that big and we already have now roads. Here, here's a news flash. You're calling the Boston Globe just last month. No one's giving up their cars. No one. There was a three percent increase in car, uh, car sales just last year. No one's giving up their cars. You're, you also look at the bicycle lanes, eighty miles of bicycle lanes, but then less than three percent, I believe, or about two percent. Of Boston residents identify themselves as bicycle commuters. So we built all these bicycle lanes. Uh, what you call the continued narrow our roads. Matta Plan, please, please don't get bullied by anybody. We have to improve our buses and our transportations, but I believe that we have to condition people. To get out their cars and use public transportation, ride their bikes, walk, use other means to reduce, you know, our density. All done.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Um, moving on now to a, a cross topic. It has to do with housing and development. And minority contractors, getting the contractors for those projects, both large projects and small, having to do with the Article eighty process. Housing and development, they go hand in hand. And the question is, what is your insight? Because affordable housing versus market and development on getting minority contractors, their equal share in access to the city and private developments. And, uh, who started last? David?
Um, Mr. Pep started last.
Okay. Um, thank you. Kennedy Ruiz?
Yeah. So friends of homes, again, getting back to the trades and the high schools, I want an overabundance of tradespeople that look like us. That makes things a lot easier when we're chasing folks when it comes to these projects. Here's the other thing too, we have hard and fast rules that sometimes we don't keep to here in the city of Boston. I'm gonna be championing that. People say we need rules and I'm like, man, I've read all of these rules and they're supposed to be equal access of people of color. And, uh, companies of cars have, uh, oppo- opportunities into the housing processes and the building of these housing processes. That's important, that if we create these rules, then we should follow these rules. And no one wants more, uh, to put more city of Boston residents, especially people who look like me, black and brown. To get in, uh, get an equal opportunity in the building trades and to, uh, shape how we look here in the city of Boston through our housing.
Thank you. Can I pepper?
Yeah, so when we speak about development and housing, the topic of equity always comes up. And we need, we need to make sure that. When we're giving the jobs to a developer and the BPDA is looking for, you know, building up the parcels that exist in the, in the, in the district. We need to make sure that we are doing it in an equitable, in an equitable way. I found out that Habitat for Humanity is building two million dollar homes. That are gonna be sold for actually about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For families of low income. But the process for them to be able to get that land and actually go through the RFP process was terrible. Because there wasn't enough, um, opportunity for developers of color to be able to come in and vouch for that. So I wanna be able to, as a city councillor, hold the BPDA accountable to say, we're gonna, if we're gonna give an opportunity for developers to build in the city. Let's actually make sure that they're starting to look like the families that they're building it for. Cause that's the true. If that's the true definition of equity, not just affordable housing, but creating a source of revenue and economic opportunity. For those business owners such as the developers that we wanna make sure that have an equal opportunity in the city of Boston.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we have a question from the community around basic city services, kind of the bread and butter of municipal government. Uh, what would be your plan, working with the mayor and city agencies to improve basic city services in Matapan? And we'll extend that out because Greater Matapan does encompass, uh, other working neighborhoods as well. So throughout District Five and Greater Matapan. And Mr. Pep, and we'll start with you.
I take pride in my work of constituent services. Um, there is no better candidate in this race than me when it comes to. Simple constituent services and city resources. You know, I was able to work with every single department in the city and understand that. There is a gap of service in a neighborhood like Matapan. There isn't a scheduled cleanup operation that exists. Across Almond Park or the, or the, or the, or the Blue Hill Avenue corridor. Constantly, we used to get three, three-one-one requests of, hey, why are we picking up these weeds that are being cut out or this litter that exists on the street? I wanna make sure that I'm working with those departments and lit- and set up a. Everlasting schedule that is going to ensure the cleanliness. And the accountability from the city department so that the residents don't have to depend on three-one-one to constantly request that. Cause I think that if basic city services is not happening in the city of Boston.
Ten seconds.
Nothing else will function appropriately.
Thank you, Mr. Pep. Excuse me, Mr. Ruiz.
Uh, I'm taller than Pep. No hair, but I get you. Mr. Pep is, that's not true. I'm the better candidate here. And the reason for that is I convinced Lynn Hurstey on B three side, even though on the Dorchester, to, um. Advocate for raised crosswalk on Lynn Hurstey, cause there was three years in a row where kids got hit by the playground. I showed the people on Almond Park how to solicit the city to get capital improvement funds and renovate Almond Park. When there was no baseball in Matapan, I brought baseball to Matapan. When there was no softball in Matapan. I brought, uh, softball to Matapan. When I found out to the Public Health Commission. That Matapan and that in the Dorchester had people with the, uh, highest percentage of no limbs due to heart ill, um. Heart illnesses, um, and diseases. I created recreational and, um, exercise programs there. I am a proven person of Matapan. I was part of the Matapan, uh, miracle and I helped change things around. No one better at basic services than me.
Thank you so much. F Tino?
Thank you. Uh, we have a question in the chat and I'm gonna ask, uh, the resident, if she would like to ask her own question, Leah Dalton. If you would like to come up for me. Angel, if you can unmute her?
Give me one second. I'm trying to find her. There's a lot of people.
No problem. L E A H. Not church. Oh, hi. Hi, Leah. Would you like to ask your question that you placed in the chat?
Uh, yes. Okay. Thank you all for coming, cause I really feel like I have not seen anyone out here. Campaigning and I worked the polls and I just feel like I have not seen any campaigns, people campaigning. I don't know who was running or anything. So I really appreciate you for being here. Also, as being a Matapan, I don't feel like it is safe. I mean, they call it murder pan. You know, and and that is up. I don't see any programs for our youths. We gotta keep these youths busy because that's how they stay out of trouble. And I definitely don't want the bus going down the middle of, uh, Blue Hill Ave.
Uh, thank you, uh, Leah. We, so is your question, your question is about how they would address those topics?
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Uh, start with. I don't know why I'm jumping on. Kenya, uh, Pep?
Of course. First of all, um, Ms. Dalton, thank you so much for that question. And. What I'll say is that when I think about the youth programs that exist or don't exist. I wanna make sure that the programs, the, the people that are running those programs feel supported. I was, I'm a good friend with Mick, who is the leader of the Matapan Patriots. And he was talking to me about how there hasn't been a line of communication yet of making sure that. Students in BPS know that they even exist. And he has been having a very difficult time. For him to actually find a, a way of communication. So as a city councillor, what I would do is I would make sure that not only am I working with the Matapan Patriots. Or any other sports leagues or any other youth leagues like the Matapan Teen Center that exists, that they have the right resources to be able to take in more kids. So that they're actually able to advertise, speak to the parents that they feel supported. That's the only way that we're, that's gonna take care of two things. Daycare, childcare, it's gonna make sure that the streets are, are safe because kids are not gonna have an opportunity to be on the streets. And it's just, it's gonna lead to a better quality of life for everyone in, in, in the neighborhood. And that's why I appreciate the work that the Matapan Patriots do, that the Matapan Teen Center does. And I'm, I'm gonna be the biggest ally to them. Cause that's, I grew up in an environment like that. Little League raised me. Pop Warner raised me. I was raised in YMCA. I wanna make sure that kids feel that they have that opportunity as well. And let's bring an art center to Matapan. Cause that doesn't exist at the moment and I know there's so much art potential in there. That's what I'll say.
Uh, thank you. Kennedy Ruiz?
I was part of the Matapan, uh, uh, miracle and anytime, uh, anyone called it murder pan, I was pissed. And then people ask me, what's the success of the Matapan miracle? Well, I was part of that. We were number one baby in homicides, nothing to be proud of. But within four years, we went from being the highest to the lowest in the city of Boston. How did we do that proactive policing? So, I was part of the library, you know, changing the library, building a new library there. I created youth programs over the Boys and Girls Club, cause I build, uh, great relationships over there. I was the only police officer that was jogging laps over at Almond Park while they practiced and kids were pointing, pointing at me to go. That guy's a cop. He's actually here. Because I knew my presence improved security for, for the people there. For the seniors, I was with Shirley Schillings for, when we started the seniors ball. Folks, our biggest goal, myself or Pep and whichever one is elected, and I hope, and I hope it's me. Is getting people to care again. We need to get people to get out their apartments and do long walks with Fatima and everybody else. Because our presence is needed, not just in Matapan Square, but out all of Matapan. Our biggest goal. Our biggest goal is to sit next, your next city council is getting more people to care. How do we do that? I don't know. But I'm gonna figure it out with you.
Thank you very much. Uh, our next question from the community submitted is in regards to mass and cats. Uh, as many of us know, this is a significant issue that has dominated a lot of the conversation. Over these last few years and even beyond since recent election cycle. Uh, while mass and cast is physically not a part of District Five, the impacts of decisions are just all across the city. And so the question is, what is your take or insight on this area as a public policy issue and potentially a major problem? And what would be your remedies or your recommendations for dealing with it? Uh, Mr. Pep, we will start with you.
Of course, this is, um, this question for me is, is dear to my heart because. I was. My cousin is someone that unfortunately was a mass and cast a few years ago. And because of that, I actually delved deep into looking into what are we doing as a city? And what I can say is that we're not doing enough. And I wanna make sure that as a city councillor, we go in there. And we, we look into reopening that Long Island Bridge that we know worked. And stop that mass and cast from happening because people like the. The drug dealers that are in that area right now, we're not able to get to, to Long Island and help and spread and spread the. The, the, the drug abuse that happens. I wanna make sure that we're working with our state partners to make sure that. We are bringing resources to the North Shore and the South Shore because what's happening is that all the resources at the moment. Are too concentrated in Boston, which is why we are seeing so much influx of what's happening on Atticson Street. Which is just a terrible situation. So I wanna look at it from a humanitarian way. And I don't wanna be the candidate that serves as an obstacle to a potential solution.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ruiz?
I'm the former chief of public safety for the Public Health Commission. And I tell people all the time, my number one priority when I was there was not the clients, but the employees. Folks, listen to me loud and clear. I had to protect the employees just because there were so many city employees assaulted there. All right? There's no one in the world that wants to save more people than Jose Ruiz and I have. I have had family members who have been, you know, affected by drug abuse and alcohol abuse and everything else. But you have to make firm decisions there. The city of Boston has made it very attractive for everybody to come all over. From, from people that come from all over the United States. We're gonna have to make it less attractive. We have to make some firm decisions. No one more humanitarian than me, but we've made it so attractive. We are getting people from the entire United States. Here's the other thing too, that's really, really important. Why not spread this around? You know, you have an empty hospital in Framingham. You have some, uh, bases that are empty throughout Massachusetts. There's alternate places to address this. I, as my candidacy, it's probably why they're rushing. The renovations of their bridge, cause I have, um, opened up the eyes of people, some of my knowledge of what's going on in Mass and Cast. Now I'm not gonna stop. And beware of Shattuck Hospital. That's going to be affecting Matapan, sincerely.
Uh, thank you. Thank you. Uh, we're going to now go and, um, move it back again to question from the audience. I believe Kenya Beeman, Professor Andrews. Can you like to unmute yourself and ask your question?
Good morning, everybody. Uh, Kenya Beeman here. Uh, I'm a lifelong Matapan resident. I have a comment and a question. Um, first thing is, is my comment and that's with regard to the Blue Hill Ave, uh, Transportation Action Plan. And what I would, uh, encourage our candidates to do now, you guys are not in my district, so I don't vote for you guys in D five. However. You're part of the O two, one, two, six, which also affects my role at the BPDA. So my comment with regard to Blue Hill Ave is that, um, I would behoove you to think beyond drivers. We have a lot of drivers. Who during the community engagement process have said that they are not more or less in favor of center bus lanes. But I was, I would ask you to expand beyond drivers and think about commuters, people who cannot afford a vehicle. And think about our young people who take the tea to community centers, to school, to dancing school, to sports events and sports. Practice and all those sorts of things. So the center bus lanes, you know, I think minimally will affect drivers, but it would. Hugely benefit those who cannot afford a vehicle. And that's everybody from some seniors who don't drive. To everybody who have to go to work in the morning and are young people. That's my comment. My question though. As a lifelong Matapan resident, I have seen Matapan Square transition to a space where it served all. It served everybody in this community from Brigham's to Woolworth's to Brothers to whatever you name it. Everybody in the Matapan neighborhood and probably beyond came to Matapan Square to get what they need. I don't know if that's really, um, no, I'm a lie. I'm lying. I don't wanna say I don't know. I know it's not the case right now in twenty twenty-three. And so I think Matapan has struggled in the last twenty plus years to get to where it used to be, probably when I was a child. And so I, I, I'm asking you guys, will you make Matapan Square a priority? Um, in, in, in your, in your agenda, I guess, if you will. And so that's everything from the parking to the traffic, to the economic development. To the safety, to the lighting, everything that is an ill, if you will, in Matapan Square. Will you make Matapan Square a priority? We've done a planning study that included Matapan Square at the BPDA. I would encourage you to read that plan. It's on the BPDA Matapan website, cause there's a lot of things that are said in there that we've heard from residents that they will love to see in Matapan Square. But again, my question is, how and what will you do to improve Matapan Square?
Thank you, Canada. Uh, first to go, I believe is Enrique, uh, Kenya Pep.
Yes. Thank you so much. And I am very happy I get to go first on this because. Their city has actually released this thing called Squares and Streets, um. Plan, which I know that Kenya is aware of and has worked very hard on this. And it's to give the residents an opportunity to tell the city, what is it that they want to see going to Matapan Square? I actually released my plan. It's called Envision District Five. And it breaks down the three different main streets corridor that exist in District Five. But we're focusing on Matapan Square at the moment. And it's a, it's a way to build what we call a fifteen-minute neighborhood. So that residents can do business, can go to a health center, can go to a laundromat, can get a hair.
So that residents can do business, can go to a health center, can go to a laundry mat, can get a haircut, can. Get exercise done, all in the matter of a walk in distance. Or at least, you know, you could either drive there, take the bus, um take a bike, whatever you're using as a mode of transportation. So that what Kenya says used to exist can be brought back. Because that is the only way that we are going to build a community. So that Mattapan residents can feel proud of the square again, and we can build a a strong economic opportunity. As Jalen Brown has said recently, you know, it's about building that Black Wall Street in Boston. I think that Mattapan Square has the opportunity to be that for the city of Boston.
Thank you. And Mr. Ruiz?
Well, I gotta refresh Kenya's uh memory too, because we were a part of it. There was actually a Mattapan master plan that was led by A B C D over there. Where or myself, Cynthia Bruinton, all the officers were a big part of it. Where it went off for, I believe, three or four years, and there was a master plan in place. And then there was a change of uh mayor leadership, and I don't know what happened to the plan. So we have spent so much money creating different master plans, we've ne- we've never executed one. So now I find out that there's another master plan that we just started again on how to improve our squares. Because we have different leadership. I've got an idea, Mattapan. Why don't we tell people what we really want and stick to that one plan? We were part of that master plan. I thought it was going to go through, and I'm going, why wasn't it carried out? We have to get our political leaderships or what you call it to understand to the neighbors of the party and not their not their terms or their limits.
Thank you. Uh we're going to move on because we have time for just a few more questions to get into our final comments. Uh so this one is once again, one of our submitted questions. And for the person who submitted it, please know I'm just going to amend it for time a little bit. So the question is in regards to our capital projects here in the city of Boston. Uh what are the plans to find qualified contractors to fix facilities used by the public? And there's a anecdote that's referenced here about the delays in getting the gym floor fixed at the Mildred Avenue Community Center. And the impact that it has on both attendees and participants and community center program. Students at the Mildred Avenue School. Uh to make a long story short, the floor has not been fixed. Residents coming to vote and children programs are still not presented with a safe word to be used. What would you do to prevent such lengthy waiting to provide a safe facility and make improvements in our physical plants? Uh Mr. Ruiz, we'll start with you.
As former director of the Blackstone Community Center, I had problems there too. Trust me, I've gone through it. As a person who constantly uses the Mildred and also was on the Matter Hunt Community Center, nothing more frustrating. Than politics in the middle of getting things done. One of the biggest issues that we have in here in the city of Boston, that's why that bridge to Long Island is down. Is that we don't have a good maintenance plan in place. This is all due respect to a lot of people in history. We don't do really good with our, uh you know, with our um maintenance of things. We need to come up with ten year plans. Right now, Almont Park Football Field needs a new turf. The Matter Hunt is still closed. The pool at uh at the Mildred is still closed. Why? Cause the city does not have a good maintenance plan. Maintenance plans have to be transparent for the residents too. They should know what's coming every four years, every five years, and every ten years. Parks need to be renovated every fifth year. Gym floors need to be changed every ten years. Pools are a constant. Folks, we don't have a good maintenance plan for many of our facilities. Time for us to create tra- maintenance plans that are open and transparent to residents, so that way they know when their renovations are coming. And I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. I'm Mr. Pen.
You know, a unique opportunity that as a city councillor we would have is that we actually have. Would have control if elected of the BPS facilities management. That is something that the city council can actually say and hold them accountable to do. I remember this actually. I remember when I was working, I was walking down um. Walking down Blue Hill Ave and I met, I met a parent of a of a young of a young man. Who was playing basketball there and brought up this concern to me. And I said, why are we failing to even take care of the simplest things? That's something that Mr. Ruiz and I have in common. Is that the maintenance of this city is terrible. We are too much of a reactive city and not enough proactiveness. We don't look at what might come down in line. Instead, we wait until it's crumbled down. That's something that I'm not proud of in this city, and I want to make sure that when we talk about those capital plans. We look at what's, when we look at those gaps that are, that we don't, are not paying attention to in a neighborhood like Mattapan. Because believe it or not, the Matter Hunt and the community center there, it's quote unquote, one of the newer community centers in the city. But that floor doesn't speak for it. So what are we doing? How is it possible that that floor is crumbling on a newer facility? It's just not appropriate for a city like Boston to have a place like that. And I'm just, I mean, I'm going in there ready to hold them accountable and work with whoever is in charge of fixing. For example, the floor of 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 that community center.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pen. Fatima, turn over to you.
Um thank you. Um I'm going to take a break uh one to make one comment, because I am looking at the comments in the chat. There are, whether or not you agree with a comment that someone has made. Please do not make comments in the chat that polarize our community at all. So far, I can speak as chair for this for the GMNC. I tend over forty meetings a week. And I can tell you that in many of those meetings, I see Kenya Beaman when she's representing the BBDA. She has always gone and distinguished when she is speaking for as a BPDA employee. And from when she is speaking as a Mattapan resident. Now, whether or not we, someone all agree or not with her point of view. She has never crossed the lines of my presence, and that includes right now today. I'm sorry that I have to go and bring this up. But I I do think that um. You do have to be, listen. We don't always have to agree with everyone, and I agree one hundred percent, Javon, I believe that you are one of the most thoughtful people. In our community who's who does look out for everybody. But we don't always agree with what this process in the Blue Hill Avenue Transportation Action Plan is a hot topic. But we do have to make room for different people's points of view. And we do have to be civil with each other. So going forward, that is the only comment that I have to make on that. Um and I'm not looking for a response, Javon. No, 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 no. We don't have time for that. We don't have, we we don't have, we don't have before that. But we will, we can address this offline, but this is what this is happening right now.
One second.
Okay, okay. I do, I do respect both uh everyone here. Okay? Alright, so going forward. Um thank you. Uh next question, we were. Okay, um David? Thank you.
Yes, uh so we did have a hand up in the audience from Zon Reed from the GMNC board. Uh Zon, are you available? Would like to ask your question?
Yeah, I'm here. How you doing? Thank you. Um I'd like to know, um I heard a lot about, you know, bus lanes and um storefronts and different things like that in Mattapan. But how can we bring healing to the community? Because it's been a lot of violence going on in the community. And I'd like, you know, I hear, you know, stuff about youth programs and different things, but is there a plan? To, you know, he- heal the, heal the adults, heal the um the parents, um any, any plan?
Thank you so much for your question uh for that one. Mr. Ruiz, we'll start with you.
Well, um great timing. So I mentor nine people. From Monday to Saturdays who wanted to get in law enforcement, and we talk a lot about counseling. I encourage a lot of conversation. I tell people, when you don't express your thoughts, it really, really bother you. It eats at you like a cancer. And the best way to get over that is by being able to talk about it. Pepin and I showed up after that young boy was killed um by his cousin in Mattapan over the summer. We showed up in a in a healing, and he will attest to the fact, how I tell people, we don't attack. One another on the situations like this, but we also talk too much. Support is not spoken, it is shown. And I asked her, you know, I'm not going by the family's house because they don't know me. But some of you know the family. Are you going to take two, three days and go over there and offer your support? Let them turn it down if that's what they want, but at least offer it. And then here's the other thing, we soon, we forget those departed under those situations. Much too quickly, and we forget that those family continues to hurt. We had another boy that was killed over on Wood Ave, you know what I mean? And we talk about speed bumps and speed hubs, and I don't like those things. I'd rather have raised. Which slows down uh cars. But I'm one of those that promotes discussion, because if you don't, there is no healing.
Thank you, uh Mr. Pen.
Was on that some, that's, that's such an important topic to bring up because. When we look at the time of life that we're living in with social media and. Our youth being exposed to constant feeds on our Instagram stories of violence happen. What's, even even the adults, what's happening is that people are starting to think this isn't normal. That this is just how we're supposed to live. But we have an opportunity here to. Create those spaces like the one that Jose and I were in over the summertime, but bring them to the schools. We got to make sure that we're starting at a young age. And have, and you know how we have those fun pep rallies and stuff? We also need to have moments of healing in the auditorium to speak to the students so that they know that this is not normal. That's why there's so much violence, like that 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 shooting happened in Mattapan, that was between two people, all younger than twenty years old. And they think that violence is the only resolution. But what happens is that that's, if we don't start to target it at a young age, it's wanting to continue as they get older. And it starts to cement more in their life, and it's going to continue to pass over generations. So that's my priority is to make sure that we're not normalizing it. We're creating those spaces for healing and that we're using. That sense of community and family to say, listen, we need to step up to take care of each other. And I just, it saddens me that we're not doing that enough.
Thank you, Mr. Pen. Fatima.
Okay, in the interest of time, we're going to take, we're going to ask one more question, and it's going to be for ones that were already submitted. For those who have their hands raised, still raised and have questions, if you would like to submit them, we will be asking the candidates. Uh those questions. For the last question, um starting with Kenner Ruiz. What would you do to bring back an elected school committee? That is elected from the broader not um in its current form. Thank you.
So I'm against an elected school committee because I was alive when it was there and it was happening. And it never really, really worked. Folks, when it's been under the direction and the rule of the mayor, then we can funnel everything towards the mayor. But I'm not going to corner myself there. The majority speaks. If you can come and convince me to, you know, how that would be a better things, then, you know, then come to me. But I am telling you, I was part of history when there was an elected school committee, and it just never really, really worked. Someone's going to have to explain to me how that might be a better alternative. Uh if people are paying attention to what's going on with the Boston School Committee too, there isn't a lot of people applying to be on that committee. We have to figure out how we can make this a quality position. Because if we're not getting people to apply to sit on those committees, are we going to get enough people to want to run? And then how is it funded and everything else? It comes with too many politics. I'm, if we're talking about simplifying politics and process.
Ten seconds.
I don't think that this is the right way, but again, I'm willing to listen to everybody.
Thank you. Um Kenner, Kenner Pepin?
That's an area where Jose and I differentiate. I think that by having an elected school committee, that's when accountability starts to come in. If we want to talk about politics. Now are you telling me that by the mayor appointing the school committee members, that's not politics? They're just going to agree with everything that has been pushed for by the mayor's administration. While by having an elected school committee, we have an opportunity to have conversation, a difference of opinions. Yes, we have an appointed school committee right now, but our but our BPS system is hurting. The parents continue to complain, the numbers of, if it's it's proven. That if a student doesn't get into an exam school for high school in BPS, they're more likely to be put into a Catholic school. Or 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 somewhere outside of the city. So what are we doing to fix that? I and I think that that only comes with change and a difference of opinions. So that's why I want to push for an elected school committee.
Kenner Pen, thank you so much. And so we're coming up on time, uh in the interest of keeping things moving along efficiently. We want to give both of our candidates a a chance to close things out with two minutes of final remarks. Uh Mr. Ruiz, we will begin with you. Oh, Mr. Ruiz, you're muted.
Someone keeps muting me. It hasn't been me, by the way. So um I will say this, I respectfully and encourage you to vote for me because I believe I'm the best candidate. Out of the two of us, I've run budgets. I'm a doer. I'm an agent of change. I've been an agent of social justice. When many people have been talking, I've gone through the back door and I've created programs. I have addressed needs from children to seniors, mostly in Mattapan, mostly in Dorchester. And definitely in the south end in Roxbury. I've been an example of success wherever I've gone. Wherever I left, I've left the place better. When I left Mattapan, it's a community service office. Uh at a community service office, there was an outcry at Mayor Walsh, and one of the worst things that he ever did was to pull me out of that police station. Because of my proactive approaches. Almont Park had not received any funding in forty years until Jose Ruiz showed the neighbors how to get it started. Matter Hunt was a dump until I joined that board and I be it became proactive. There's some, I am someone that's going to be constantly on the move. I'm never going to give up on you. I'm going to work on you, but you also know that I'm also a fighter. You're going to have to convince me like I have to convince you. This is going to be a team effort when I become your city councillor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Mr. Pen, the floor is yours.
First of all, I'd just like to thank this organization for for doing this. Because this is where it is. It's the conversations that happen between the candidates and the residents. We're going to have disagreements, but what you will get from me is a is a solution minded person. Throughout my experience, I've looked at the obstacles that have been present, that have been provided to me, and I've done nothing but to fix them. I want to make sure that I'm serving as a bridge between the residents of Mattapan and the city of Boston. Cause that's the only way that change is going to happen, making sure that the residents know what's available to them. What resources exist and making sure that they're not being told what they need. But I'm able to serve as their, as bring them to the table so that they can say, what do they want? I am invested not only in Mattapan, but in High Park and and Rosson, because this district is my home. I believe that District Five is the backbone of the city. It's where the working class lives. The bus drivers, the mailmans, the the Congresswoman lives here, the mayor lives here, the firefighters, the police. People choose District Five for a reason, so let's make sure we're making, we're showing the rest of the city how we're doing it. And that's why I asked for your support on November seventh to be your District Five City Councillor.
Thank you so much. Um please join me in giving both candidates a round of applause for their time dissipation and substantial answers. Thank you. Uh we really appreciate you taking the time. We know how challenging it is managing a schedule. Uh so we also know that where you put your time shows what you care and what you value. And so you putting your time here to speak with the residents, the members of GMNC, the residents of a broader community. Really does mean a lot for folks who have put questions into the chat that unfortunately weren't able to get to in the scope of time that we had. Uh as Fatima said, we will be collecting all of those, sending those out to the candidates as well and getting their responses. And we're more than happy to put those up on our website. Their response is there uh for folks to see. Um for those who are participating, we see more folks coming in. We're really excited. That in a little bit, we're going to be kicking off our at large forum in about ten minutes. So we're going to take a little bit of a break just to uh go over a few things with the candidates as they're coming in and get everybody uh prepped and ready. So this is a great time to step away, get a cup of coffee, do whatever you need to do. Of course, folks are more than able to stick around and chat with one another, as Fatima said, civilly uh in the chat if they'd like. But we will see everyone back here getting ready at about eleven thirty for our at large forum. So with that, we're going to pause our report.
Thank you. Uh welcome back, everyone. Uh this is continuation of part two of the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council's. Uh at large city councillor forum. These people are coming back on into the room. If you were before, welcome back. If you're just joining us, uh welcome to. The GMNC is, this is our forum for the candidates who are. Um as I said, for at large. One of the reasons that we're concerned, um, to make sure that we have these forums is the current low voter turnout that happened. Um, in District Five in particular. District Five represents seventy percent of Matapan for those who may not know. And at the same time, Matapan has some of the, um. The lowest uh, overall health indicators um, for our residents. As well as overall public services and a lot of other things to which we believe that. Those who would be sitting in the city council would be able to address. Um, we have online, I believe I'm gonna turn it over to David to introduce our candidates. Um, David?
Thank you so much, Fatima. Uh, with David Halbert, GMNC Board Member, Chair of our Economic Development Subcommittee. And resident here in Greater Matapan specifically, just over the line in Dorchester. So happy to be here, so happy to have so many of our candidates for the at-large city council seats, for at-large city council seats here with us today. Just to go over format so folks are aware, uh, because of the number of folks that we have today. We're limiting our responses to thirty seconds on each of these. We know that's not a lot of time, but hopefully that'll allow us to get through a number of different policy areas. We're going to give each candidate a one-minute opening. Uh, we will be providing uh, very gentle audible reminders on the time so that we can keep things a little bit tight. And of course, once again, at the end of the day, we will also give each candidate a minute for uh, closing remarks. And folks can please feel free to put questions in the chat or use the raise hand function. And we will try to get to as many as we can in the time that we have. Uh, we will be running until uh, just about one o'clock. Uh, so we're gonna try to keep this very tight. Uh, but before we get started, we also want to acknowledge those elected officials. Who have joined us, taken part today, uh, so State Representative Russell Holmes, State Representative Brady Flueper Oakley, and Suffolk County Register appropriate Stephanie Everett. Uh, thank you so much for taking the time and being here. Uh, your perspective and your partnership is so critical to making sure that things. Work well for the Greater Matapan Community and for the city at large. Uh, so with that, we are going to go and we're going to start. Uh, we will begin with Councillor Mahia.
Well, good morning, everyone. I'm really excited to be with you all today. Just wanted to thank you all. For convening us. I think it's really important as we're talking about civic engagement that we have platforms like this um, to do so. I am in my uh, entering my third term. Um, hopefully, I'm finishing off my second. I have been in um, this position for three and a half years, and I'm happy to say that. In three and a half years, just this week, um, we have managed to uh, pass fifteen pieces of legislation. And I've secured millions of dollars through the budgeting process to deliver for the people that we serve. I consider myself the little Chihuahua on the city council, but I'm going into becoming a pit bull because now I know better. So the the whole idea is once you know better, that you do better. So I'm really excited. I have a growth mindset. I have seen how politics works and does not work for those that I serve, and I'm looking forward to taking the lessons that I've learned. To bringing people together across their differences, because one thing I know for sure, that we can't keep doing business as usual. And expecting that we're listening to people. And so my goal is to use my award-winning personality, um, in my third term to bring people together. Across those differences so that we can move the city forward without leaving anyone behind. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, next we'll go with City Councillor Erin Murphy.
Thank you. Um, thank you all for being here. I'm Erin Murphy, proud to be one of your at-large city councillors representing all of the neighborhoods across the city. I made it a priority when I was campaigning and continue to keep that promise of. Making sure to show up in every neighborhood, work hard and lift the voices of our residents, especially neighborhoods who feel like their voices aren't. Listened to like Matapan. Oftentimes I hear that you don't feel as though you're being heard at the same level of other neighborhoods. And thank you, um, Fatima for bringing up the low turnout. I've been talking a lot. I've always talked a lot about making sure we engage. Our residents, but this feeling, I do think it's connected to a feeling like. Your vote doesn't matter. You don't feel as though you're being heard, but I do want to say thank you for keeping us on a quick timeline. I know that many of my answers will probably be cut short. But please visit my website, erinforboston.com, because over these past two years, I've been very open with press releases and. And been very clear where I stand on many of these issues. So please visit my website and many of the thoughtful questions that will be asked today. If I don't have time to. Really dig deep into it, you can visit there and always willing to follow up with conversations. So thank you.
Councillor Luiz.
Good morning, everyone. Bonjour tout le monde. Uh, thank you to the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council for having me here. I'm Ruthie Louie Jean, at-large city councillor in my first term. And really excited to be running for reelection. It is a privilege every day to wake up and to serve the residents of Boston. Um. I was born and raised in Matapan and High Park, and I live in what has been dubbed, what I've dubbed as Mata Park, right on the line. Um. And I know what it means to grow up in neighborhoods where you feel ignored, disaffected. And where I feel like our systems aren't responding to the needs of our residents, especially our black and brown residents. I've really been uh, proud of the work that I've done on the city council in these first twenty months. Using my experience as an attorney representing folks uh, facing eviction and foreclosure to advocate for housing, especially housing for our most vulnerable populations. Like those who are returning home from incarceration. The Globe did a really great write-up on a pilot program that I um, helped in. Centering uh, making sure our neighborhoods look beautiful. Relief, all of that. I can, I look forward to continuing partnering with you in the second term and humbly ask for your vote on November seven. Thanks, everyone. Messi, I'm Bill.
Thank you so much, councillor. Uh, next candidate, Clifton Braithwaite.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Clifton Braithwaite. I'm long-term resident of Boston, Mass, and I lived in Matapan for at least the last twenty-plus years. Um, my father and mother into real estate, so they bought a home in what was at one time Matapan. The district lines changed it to High Park. That's in the Friendship Road area. Um, three decades of service in our community. Um, working almost every campaign you can think of, as well as um, helping on ballot questions. And and just navigating families through the city and state level. It would be an honor to serve my community because to me, it's not a job. It's a way of life. It's a way to bridge the gap between. Politics and city. Um, I hope to earn one of your four votes to be your next city councillor at large. And once again, my name is Clifton A. Braithwaite, and it'd be your honor to serve. Because that's our job, to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is candidate Sean Nelson. Candidate Sean Nelson will be next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, hi, everyone. My name is Sean Nelson, one race ca- person of Boston, went to English High School, graduate. Um, veteran US Marine Corps, currently working as a certified nursing assistant in Boston. Um, the reason why I'm joining is, um, I want to be basically. Lend my hand out to my community in Boston to make sure it's better. This is my home. I do not want it to be destroyed. I want everyone to have an equal voice onto the table. I have recently, you know, become somewhat of an activist in Boston, have attended meetings, have spoke with some of the councillors, and. I feel like they're not actually doing their jobs as well as they claim to be, you know, trying to speak with some of them. They honestly ignore me, but I don't personally agree. I'm a person that can actually sit down and have a conversation with people who I don't agree with, but then we need to have that conversation and bring people to the ta- table. I am the average, you know, boss. I am the average Bos- Bostonian that wants to do better and make sure we have a community where we all have a voice to be heard and spoken and improve our cities.
Thank you very much. Uh, next is candidate Henry Santana.
Good morning. Um, thank you, David. Thank you, Fatima, and thank you um, to the Greater Matapan Council um, for for convening us here today. Uh, my name is Henry Santana, and I'm one of um, the candidates for Boston City Council at Large. Um, I often say my story is one of Boston's. Um, I was born Dominican Republic and came um, to uh, Mission Hill, Boston at a young age. Um, product of public housing, attended our Boston Public Schools, and have dedicated my life to public service. Um, I've been able to be a a a city council staffer, um, a- a- on the city council, a former councillor Kenzie Bach. Um, before joining Mayor Michelle Wu as her Director of Civic Organizing, um. And, you know, as 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 a product of Boston, as a product of 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 our, um. Public schools and a- as a product of our um, housing here in the city of Boston, I'm I'm really running um, to be representative of the next generation. Coming. Um, I'm I'm very proud of the campaign we've been able to run, the momentum we've been able to gain um, from different elected officials across the city. Um, and I'm I'm really running um, to to serve you all, um, and yes, thank you so much for having us here today, and I'm looking into. I'm diving into some of the questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and finally candidate Catherine Vital.
Hi, thank you for inviting me. Um, since myself and Sean Nelson have been. Excluded from other candidate forums and events, I really appreciate that you guys invited us. Um. So my name is Catherine Vitali. I was born and raised in Dorchester, and I'm now raising my two children here. I was a restaurant manager for fourteen years, and I've been a human rights activist for the past three years. I've been through many of the struggles of the average low-income family. Um, in Boston, I've been homeless three times over the past ten years, and I have many friends and family members who've suffered from addiction. Um, my goal is, my goal on the city council would be to improve the quality of life for all Boston residents, landlords, business owners, and city workers. When I see a problem, I don't try to cover it up with a temporary solution. I'm a problem solver. I get to the root of the problems. And I find real attainable solutions. I'm not interested in playing politics with people's lives. Um, I would be the city councillor that Boston residents know that they could go to for answers and solutions. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Uh, we will turn it over to Fatima for our first question.
Okay, um, before we start, did we take one last look to make sure to see whether or not uh, candidate New Walsh? Just, just because.
Hadn't seen her, but if she comes in, we'll make sure uh, we loop her in.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we took one last scan, didn't want to leave, leave her out inadvertently. Okay. Uh, the first question for, um. Starting is, um, this year. Uh, the city of Boston will pilot its participatory budgeting process with four million dollars. Will you, if elected, re-elected or elected first as a Boston City Councillor? Advocate to increasing the budget to ten million dollars in the next year's budget? And we will start with, um, Julia Mahia.
All right, um, so I actually have been a loud voice on the council in regards to creating as many opportunities. For people to lead um, these conversations around the budgeting process. In fact, um, I was actually one of the leading voices when, um. Yes, on one was uh, trying to be enacted here in the city of Boston. So I do believe that the people, because these are your dollars, um, must have an opportunity and and a space and a and a place. To be able to advocate and and decide how to spend your money. So I would advocate and did. And did advocate during the budgeting process to give the participatory budget, um, team more dollars to to uh, work with. I don't think ten is enough. I was asking for thirty.
They, uh, thank you. Please no arguing with the moderators. Uh, candidate Santana?
Yeah, no, great. Um, you know, this is a great question. I I I actually, you know, as a as a former director of civic organizing under Mayor Wu's administration. Um, this is actually one of the projects um, that I really got to work on. Um, I was um, the middle man, uh, you know, really talking to the activists. Um, on the ground, um, and and developing the ordinance of the uh, Office of Participatory Budgeting, and I made sure that the um, the voices of the advocates. Um, wanted to see in this ordinance uh, was being um, communicated to the administration. Um, so absolutely, um, this is something that I uh, I I truly believe in, um, and I will be. Um, I I will definitely um, advocate to increase um, next year's budget to ten million. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ruthie, pleasure?
Thank you. I I uh, do support uh, phasing in and increasing participatory budgeting up to ten million. I think it's a really important part of the work of engaging people. Our budget is a reflection of our values and having our citizens and residents uh, be able to weigh in directly on. How money should be spent, um, is really important. We've started that with, uh, there's been a million dollars of of used participatory budgeting, and we're just. Uh, continuing that work. So yes, I am in support and constantly talking to advocates about. What our powers are under uh, the new city council powers and participatory budgeting powers. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, candidate Vitalik, please?
Um, so I think that I would first want to assess how the four million dollars is being spent. The process of participatory budgeting is a scam, I think, um, just like the other things that the government presents to us as a win for the people. This was supposed to be a move to empower the people, but it's actually pretty much growing the government's control over us. The mayor is in charge of hiring the director and the board, which means the mayor makes all of the decisions and the people don't really have any say.
Thank you. Um, Council Murphy?
Well, thank you. Um, with increased power comes increased responsibility, and we saw this last term with. The growing pains with our new power over the budget and not having to just veto, we could line item. So I do agree that phasing in more, but what I saw during the last two years is that those who were most, um. Strongly organized were the loudest voices, and I was afraid that some of their. Were going to count, go through, so I think it's our responsibility also to make sure that it's fair and equitable, that everyone in all neighborhoods across the city. Can share their, what they want to see in a participatory budget process. So looking forward to making sure that we put the tools in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, candidate Nelson, Sean Nelson, if you would unmute, please, thirty seconds.
Uh, yes, I would do everything in my powers to make sure the budget is grown for the people because again, it is our tax money and it should be going to the taxpayers. I'll also ensure that the community themselves, not the mayor, not some community that we didn't elect or put there. Can for our actual communities. So yes, I would.
Thank you. Um, and, um, candidate Braithwaite, if you would unmute, please, thirty seconds.
Thank you for that question. Yes, I would definitely allocate ten million dollars to up in the budget, but first and foremost, I would want to make sure. That, um, the council and all of us have one body, which it should be to make sure that these monies are being allocated in the right way. We want to make sure that we can effectively help families, help youth centers, and and build our schools better. But yes, I would be one hundred percent behind the budget increase of ten million or better. Thank you.
Thank you all. Uh, David?
Yes, thank you so much. Uh, so we're gonna move on to an education-related question, uh, specifically around Madison Park. And so the question is, what is your knowledge regarding Madison Park? And what are the strengths and weaknesses of the city's only vocational school? Once again, uh, thirty-second responses, and for this, we begin with candidate Vital.
Um, so the fact that Madison Park is our only vocational tech school is a major problem. The community at large has opposed. Um, the O'Brien to move to West Roxbury, but it's gonna happen anyway, so they can expand Madison Park to offer more vocational tech programs. Um, but keep in mind, every time the government is offering to give you something, they're probably taking something away. Instead of moving the O'Brien to expand Madison Park, we should offer vocational programs in all Boston high schools. Thank you.
Yeah. Candidate Santana.
Great, thank you, David. Um, you know, I actually grew up five-minute walk from Madison Park. Um, so, um, you know, this is really personal to me. Um, and and having those resources in our community. I'm excited to see that there are there are investments being made to um, Madison Park, but I think the issue is that. You know, there that we only do have one vocational school. So how do we increase that across, um, you know, of those resources across all schools? How do we really, um, you know, think intentionally about creating more vocational schools here in the city of Boston? Um, but, um, you know, I'm really excited to see the investments that are being put into uh, Madison Park and and looking forward if elected. Um, um, to make sure that, um, there's a community process in that. Thank you.
Candidate Nelson.
Thank you. Um, the strength is it does have a vocational school. The weakness is it's the only one in the city of Boston that has one. This should be expanded out to. All the schools within Boston. Now, everyone has the track to go to college. People want to learn skills that when they get out, they can actually use immediately. Um, so I would think this would be something that we we need to talk more about, expanding and having into all of our schools that children have these accessories. To have something, another option other than college.
Thank you. Councillor Luiz.
Thank you. There's so many great things about Madison Park. When I go and I meet with unions, so many of them that have a partnership with Madison Park, which is really great. But i- it's, everyone has a role and everyone's connected to Madison Park. There's something, the structure that isn't really working, so we really gotta think, all these people have a great interest. Friends of Madison Park, the unions, all these different, we gotta make sure that the structure is in place to strengthen Madison Park. It's also one of the only open enrollment schools, so other cities have very competitive um, vocational schools. Ours is open admissions. We gotta make sure the people at Madison Park wanna be there. And strengthen the structure of the institution which we're doing.
Councillor Murphy.
Hi, thank you. Um, as an educator, Boston Public School teacher for over twenty years, raised my kids, um. and grew up in a union household, um, dad, grandfather, uncles, cousins, all union labor unions. And my dad graduated from Charlestown High in nineteen sixty-one, when that was the electrical training there. So I'm hearing a lot of trying to spread it out, but the question about what it's raining. Um, the, I would say a few of the weaknesses, they have a fifty-six percent absentee rate every day and ninety-four percent of the students are not reading on grade level. So we really have to put a lot of effort and advocate, not just put a new shiny building. We have to work alongside all the partners to make it the world-class school it should be.
Counselor Mahia?
Yes, uh, uh, thank you. Madison Park is, I, I believe, one of those schools here in the city of Boston that has been underserved and underrepresented for far too long. I ac- actually ended up joining the advisory council for their media arts department, just so that I can go on the inside to learn, because the best way you can change things is by having, uh, one-on-one experience on what is happening and what is not. I'm really encouraged though about some of the conversations that we've been having in, in regards to facilities, but the problem is, is that we are resource rich, but coordination poor. And we're not really utilizing all of our assets here to really ensure that the city of Boston really finally went in vets.
Thank you. Candidate Brithwaite?
Thank you for that question. Uh, Madison Park, lived life to experience. I was one of the students back in the days who was protesting on the decision that they were doing a lot of budget cuts. Trades is a very important, um, work class for people. But one of the biggest mistakes we made, we didn't invest back into our school. Madison Park was revered around the United States as one of the best schools, trade schools. We need to bring that back. We need to bring that shining light and that beacon and also make the school safe for our students and the teachers.
Thank you so much. Fatima?
Thank you, David. Um, keeping on with Boston Public Schools, this question is it one from one of the constituents? If you became a city councillor, what would you do to improve BPS overall? And this time we're going to start with candidate Brithwaite. You have thirty seconds.
One, we, I would want to definitely expand by making sure that, just like in Metco, we get the parents more involved. Um, it starts at home and it also starts at the school, making sure that the schools are safe. Uh, making sure that the level of education goes to the next level. Um, we don't have time to play with our students and we don't have time to play with the families. They need our support. We need educators that care and love like it was when I grew up in school. If we can bring back the old days with the new days, we'll have a chance to have successful children and families in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, customer, counselor Murphy, please.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. Um, as a Boston public school teacher for a long time, over two decades, I've been a strong advocate and have been very outspoken these past two years on the council. I have filed many hearing orders to address the inequities that I see across the city. There is far too many schools that are failing our students, the MECAS scores and other test scores that have come back, our chronic absenteeism, safety in schools. But also, um, making sure that families have choices and that they're failing that the choice they get for whatever school their kid is assigned to is one that we can really wrap our arms around and communities feel like they own neighborhood schools. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mahia?
Yes, so as a BPS graduate and as a BPS parent, um, and as the chair of education, um, and someone who worked in the education space, organizing parents, I think one of the biggest things that I believe is missing in the city of Boston in the education system is the voices of the parents. I believe that we need to start paying parents to, um, participate in parent council so that they can build their capacity. I think answer to this is within parent and students and educators to leading the conversation, period, end of story. Not consultants.
Thank you. Uh, candidate Nelson?
Yes, thank you. Um, one thing we'd definitely do is to bring in the parents and to make sure that their voices are being heard and their concerns, making sure that we are actually bringing back an elected school board committee for the parents. Secondly, is to ensure that our teachers and state teachers are properly trained and they can actually educate our students, um, and actual education.
Second?
Ideology. It's to get the community to come in and to make sure that we are working towards a better future for our students and making sure we going in, having these meetings, talking, see what's going on behind schools, making sure parents have their rights.
Time.
And I'm spoken to.
Um, thank you. Um, Counselor Lujia?
Thank you. We got a lot to do to improve our schools. It is really important that we have loving adults, more social workers, more guidance counselors to decrease that ratio so that our students who walk every day into school with mental health issues get the support they need. Young Achievers is a school in Mattapan that's had a lot of issues of violence. They don't have one guidance counselor. They don't have any partnerships with any of the teen-based organizations. That's a problem. We have to strengthen that. We also need world-class facilities that affirm the dignity of our schools so they can have art classes, gym. Um, our, our kids go to school if they enjoy going to school. Sports and arts will help them do that.
Thank you. Uh, Kenneth Vitali?
There are so many problems in schools ranging from academics to basic safety that I one hundred percent advocate for and I encourage parents to consider homeschooling. I'm more than willing to dig into a much bigger conversation about that. Um, a four-year-old was undressed by an older child on a school bus last week. Well, basically we're putting our children on a bus and hoping for the best. We need major changes in our schools. Um, if we can't hold the school committee accountable, then we're powerless over our children.
Uh, thank you. Um, Kenneth Santana?
Yes, thank you, um, Fatima. You know, I have three main areas, um, you know, family engagement, I think i- is, is vital to the success of BPS. Um, I really want to also work on, you know, really, um, expanding our athletics across the city. Um, you know, vibrant athletics for social and emotional well-being for our students is, is very key, um, for the success. Um, and I really also want to be able to work with
Ten seconds?
Our colleges and our businesses across the city, um, to create more pathways for people, um, coming out of high school and, and into careers and, and, and different jobs here in the city of Boston. Um, thank you for your question.
Thank you. David?
Yes, thank you so much. So now we'll shift slightly and move over to public safety. Uh, this is a question that was submitted. So city councillors voted to slash the Boston Police Department budget by thirty-one million dollars. What is your insight as a candidate regarding public safety? Uh, once again, thirty second responses and for this, we will begin with Counselor Lujia.
Thank you, um, David. I think it's really important when we think about community safety, when you're thinking about public safety, we're thinking about community safety and everything that entails. One is response and response is important and response reacting to violence and the commissioner says it really well. It's not just crime, it's the fear of crime. The BBD, BPD does that well. When we're looking at prevention, prevention is on the front end. What does a safe community look like? It means affordable housing. It means green tree. It means green spaces. It means investments and people on the individual level. And that's what's really important on the front end to create, um, community safety and safe neighborhoods.
Thank you. Uh, next candidate Nelson?
Um, thanks for the question. We need to make sure that our Boston police are taken care of with mind and body. Um, it's a very difficult job. And if they don't have the funding to do their jobs, then you're going to eventually be in some of these cities where you call nine-one-one. Um, you're going to basically send or call back later. We need to make sure that we are giving the Boston police the tools that they need to keep our, um, community safe. By slashing a budget, you mean you're not going to have that many officers. Right now, we're missing about four hundred people. And we need to come up with a plan to expand it and make sure that they are working for the people and making sure they have good, um, training skills and make sure we have, you know, feedback and holding them accountable and making sure our officials are held accountable as well.
Time. Thank you. Uh, candidate Santana?
Yes, so you know, as, as, as a black immigrant, um, who grew up in public, um, in public housing here in the city of Boston, um, you know, the best thing from a public safety standpoint that happened to me, uh, was really having access to affordable and after-school programs. Um, that really created, um, an opportunity for me and my siblings to be in a space where we were engaged, where we were safe. Um, and we were also interacting with, um, police officers. I really focus on also, um, making sure that, um, community policing, um, i- is, you know, i- is happening in all neighborhoods and with an intentionality of, of, of all the history that we have there. So, um, thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Vitali?
We are headed for a crime crisis because of the shortage of police officers. Um, when Mayor Wu rolled out the COVID vaccine mandates for all city workers, somehow the firefighters' union scored a deal that no other city workers got. Since then, we've seen hundreds of Boston police personnel leave the department to become firefighters or work in police departments in other cities. Our police department is down about five hundred officers. And with a depleted force, overtime is going to occur and we're going to spend more money. We need to take better care of city employees.
Thank you. Candidate Brithwaite?
Thank you for the question. Policing community relationships and public safety is number three on my list. And not that it doesn't need more to be higher on the list. We have to really get acclimated and, and, and bring a, a certain unit that deals with mental illness patients in our community. We need to really excite and bring and bridge that gap between community and police officers. There's only one way to do it. Use arts, entertainment and food and, 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 and engage with the children like they did when I was young, when I was a young caté at eleven years old. We need to bring those services back. Thank you.
Counselor Mahia?
Uh, yeah, so I'll just say a few things. Uh, there are two ordinances that I worked on. Uh, one was in collaboration with Counselor, um, Campbell with the OPAD to really have more accountability and transparency. And the other, it was an alternative to nine-one-one, a different response to, um, services that were happening, um.
Ten seconds?
And, um, I think that what we need to do is let the community define for itself what safety looks like and then working on an action plan that includes everyone so that we can all be bought into how we're going to address the, the issues of violence here in our city. I don't think that one person has all the answers.
Counselor Murphy?
Thank you. Um, I believe providing the Boston police with adequate tools and funding is quite literally what, you know, I was sent here to do to advocate for all city departments. It's our job as city councillors to advocate also for our constituents, to keep them safe and to best leverage the resources to improve their quality of life. I'm at community meetings in every neighborhood across the city. We start off almost always with a police update and hear that neighborhoods want to feel safe and also we have to continue funding and staffing and training for the mental health supports for our police and those that they're the community policing world-class, but we can always do better. So make sure funding is going there also. Thank you.
Thank you, Fatima.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to a hot button question. And as, uh, stated earlier, let, let's try to keep it moving. This question is regarding around Blue Hill Avenue, uh, Transportation Action Plan. And this is, again, these are constituent questions. What is your insight regarding the, uh, Blue Hill Avenue Transportation Action Plan, a major project that will encompass several of Boston's, um, minority neighborhoods directly and others indirectly because Blue Hill Avenue is a main thoroughfare. So this is including Greater Mattapan. For those who don't know, includes all of Mattapan, but also, um, parts of Lower Dorchester. But it goes, the, the project would go on into door, through Dorchester and including Roxbury. So we're going to start with, um, Kenneth Santana?
Uh, this is a great question. Um, you know, I think we really need to be, uh, very intentional about really, um, creating an urgency to make the MBTA more reliable. Um, you know, we want to really make sure that, um, our residents are, are, are using our, our MBTA, um, services. Um, you know, and around this project, I'm really concerned and really focused on, you know, our local businesses, our churches, um, and, and making sure that we're working with them, um, to make sure that we're making intentional decisions. Um, you know, when we're talking about, um, you know, reviewing our Sunday parking laws, um, and, and really bringing in, um, also our workers into that conversation, um, you know, on, on, on the process, um, and, and, you know, as, as city councillor, i- if elected, I, I'll definitely be, um, an advocate on that front.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Mahia?
Yes, thank you. And I just want to give a shout out, um, to Fatima and the entire Mattapan, um, community who worked alongside our office and creating a town hall that we hosted live, um, alongside, uh, many businesses because what we want to do and what we still want to see is a community-centered approach to all things that impact those that we serve. So I really do believe that while we're working towards solutions, we can't leave those who are going to be most impacted. So I look forward to, um, diving in a little bit deeper and not just listening, but actually putting together plans that reflect what we are hearing.
Thank you. Uh, candidate Brithwaite?
Thank you for that question. Um, one about lived experience. I went to Washington Irving School and the reason why the middle aisle got put up there, we lost one of our friends due to an accident. I believe Flynn was the mayor at the time. I'm concerned about the businesses, the safety of children crossing the street and, and the traffic that might build up. If someone can truly convince me that this is a great idea, I would be with it, but I'm afraid of the, the driving when people are coming off a highway, the speed, rate of speed they will be traveling. So I'd like us to dive in on the potential of safety in the businesses in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Murphy?
Thank you. Um, I'll, I'll be paraphrasing, but I was in a meeting a few months ago with the mayor and her team and Representative Holmes was there and he made a comment that really struck me. Um, that he said, you know, this isn't a new conversation because they were trying to realign, knowing there was pushback from the neighborhood. So we've been talking about this for several years. So let's not start from square one. Let's remember all of the input and work that's already been put into this process. But we have to make sure we're listening to all the stakeholders, neighbors first, business owners, commuters, and making sure that it's not just pushed onto neighbors without their voices being heard. Okay, thank you. It's hard to only have thirty seconds, but thank you for keeping track. I'll submit my answers for sure.
I'm glad I'm not the only one that feels that way. I'm.
Okay, okay. Do not.
It's okay, no.
No argument with the moderators. Go unmute, please. Thank you. Kenneth Vitali, please?
Um, so this is the same thing that they've done in other neighborhoods across the city. Uh, despite major opposition from the residents, this isn't a plan to make Blue Hill Ave easier, um, traveling on Blue Hill Ave easier or better. It's a plan to restrict your traveling capabilities. They'll reduce traffic lanes by adding bus lanes, bike lanes and separation lanes. Traffic will become significantly worse and it will be extremely difficult for emergency vehicles, for emergency vehicles to get through, putting lives at risk when an ambulance or a fire truck can't get by other vehicles. Um, we're basically just giving them more control over us and.
Time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Counselor, um, Lujia?
Yes, thank you for this question. I also want to say thank you to Counselor, uh, to now Congressman Anna Pressley, who really fought for the money to be able to think about transforming what Blue Hill Avenue can look like. You know, I frequent cafe juice up all of the time and so many of the PNR and there's always double parking. So we really do need to make sure that we are engaging in what a new Blue Hill Avenue can look like. And make sure that we are also taking into consideration, everyone's stuff, means people who are using the bus. That means low, um, low wage workers are working class. And we need to make sure that their voices are centered in this conversation so that our streets can be multimodal, but also make sure that we can all find something that doesn't work, uh, not a hundred percent happy, but make everyone mostly happy.
Thank you. And candidate Nelson?
Thank you for the question. Um, this is going to be a problem with the Blue Hill Avenue. Unfortunately, the way Boston's designed is very poor. I don't really see functioning how you can have a bus running both ways simultaneously on the Blue Hill Avenue without causing major traffic congestion. All we're going to see is something what we see on map, um, on some of the streets with the bike lanes pushing out cars, turning two lanes into one lane.
Ten second?
Um, so I don't think this will be actually very feasible. If someone can come up with a solution, who knows, they're going to tunnel under Blue Hill Avenue. But unfortunately, I would have to say no, I don't see this actually working without causing more problems with traffic congestion and safety for people crossing the streets.
Time.
Thank you. Uh, David? Our team?
Yeah, well, thank you so much. So we're going to move on to one of the more pressing issues in the city and has been for some time, uh, speaking around housing, housing and development. And this is a question that was submitted from online. Housing and development go hand in hand. What is your insight in this regard? Because affordable housing versus market and development, uh, is getting minority contractors their equal share in access to the city and to private development. So once again, asking a question in regards to the relationship between affordable housing and providing economic development opportunities for particularly for minority and BIPOC contractors, developers and others for both creation. Uh, for this, we are going to start with Counselor Murphy.
Thank you for this. I'm a renter here in the city of Boston for a long time now and live the, um, you know, the struggle of rising costs in the city. It's an expensive city and becoming, uh, outpricing many, many, too many people. And one of the things I am a strong advocate is we need to produce more, but we also have to preserve. We cannot be gentrifying out and pushing too many families who have made these neighborhoods. It's the fabric. I know I'm not going to have enough time, but I will also say about the contracts, we see way too many New Hampshire out-of-state plates at the construction sites. So we need to do a better job at making sure contracts are going to city-owned minority businesses. Thank you.
Counselor Lujan.
Thank you. It's incredibly important that we um support more affordable housing in all of our neighborhoods, including making it easier for um additional dwelling units. We know that naturally occurring affordable housing, that's what our people are really good at in black and brown communities. So we need to make sure that we are supporting people staying in their communities, working alongside community land trust. It's incredibly important. And when it comes to making sure contracts are more available, um, that, you know, there's a mass port model that proved really effective. We need to make sure that in our process of development that we require subconscious and crack attractors to be of color. We're doing work through the Boston Residence Job Policy to really strengthen the availability of jobs for folks of color and Boston residents. Thank you.
Counselor Mihia.
Uh, thank you for that question. I created a committee on the city council called Government Accountability, Transparency and Accessibility. And I believe in that committee, we're really going to be looking at the numbers. Because what's happening is that people do employ our folks, contractors do, but that's just to get their numbers in. And then midway towards the project, they let us go. So I think that one thing is to get us, the other thing is to keep us in development. And then the other piece is that we we need to really have a regional approach around how we are measuring the AMI here in the city of Boston. Because who affordable to who? And I think we keep talking in circles around this conversation and we're not getting to where we need to be because we're doing a lot of this.
Right.
I think, I think.
Uh, candidate Nelson.
Yes, thank you. This is where I think we have the thing when we need to bring in more vocational training for people in Boston. Cause I think most of these contractors are coming from out of states because they have the working experience. Um, they have the tools that they have because they they've learned these tools. We don't have this in really in Boston. How many people can sit here and say that, oh, I went to a training program about construction, these people got into it. So if we really want to promote black and brown people, we need to make sure they're getting the trainees, that they have the opportunity to create these buildings. And when the opportunities comes up, they can be in the mix just like with the counterparts.
Thank you. Candidate Brithway.
Thank you for this question. I mean, we have some homegrown um institutions that have been proven like Team Michaels, the People's Academy. Um, when it comes to the small businessman who has um able to do contracting, we have to do a better way of paying these um smaller contractors. Cause they can't afford to wait for the bill. And to me, housing is just a a a mystery. There's no law to protect our citizens across or homeowners across the the state, across Boston. So we need to do a better job and we really need to put our heads together to make sure it's equitable for everyone to be able to live here, be able to keep their business here. Thank you.
And it's Santana.
Yeah, as product of public housing and and out of failure BHA apartments, um, you know, that really created the stability. Uh, for my family and I to really, um, you know, not just stay here in the city of Boston, but thrive here in the city of Boston. So I'm really focused on our public housing units. How do we create more units? How do we um fix up the infrastructure that we currently have? But also, how do we create homeownership opportunities for people who come from public housing straight into?
Second.
Um, you know, in regards to um the contracting, I I'm committed to making sure that, um, you know, it's an equitable process, that we have more diverse representation, um, picking up these contracts. And that's something that I'm I'm definitely committed to. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Vitali.
There are more people that want to live in Boston than we actually have room for. We need to stop overdevelopment and stop bringing in more people. The system is designed to keep us dependent on the government and affordable housing is not actually affordable. It's a subsidy. Um, like I've said, I've been in homeless shelters three times and um I have section eight now. So if I didn't have section eight, I wouldn't be able to afford to live here. And I um, I think that we need to get families better prepared to be able to switch to market rent and get off of the government subsidies so that we're not dependent. On the government.
Thank you. Fatima.
Thank you. Uh, this question was around us basic city services. What would be your plan working with the mayor and the city agencies to improve basic city services throughout all of the greater Mattapan? And we're going to start with. Uh. Counselor of. Count candidate Nelson, please.
Thank you for the question. I would be working with the mayor to make sure that we have someone going through the cities and looking through the four on one calls, going through the local meetings to just congest, confirm, turn on the community. They know their place is better out, having someone actually driving around and inspecting, you know, our properties to ensure that they're up to code. Um, and also having the community reach out and using three one one, calling their counselors and reporting these things and making sure it's getting done. This is a capital city of Massachusetts. This is not some rundown um city. It needs to be up kept and we should all be doing our part to make sure it functions.
Thank you. Counselor Murphy.
Yes, thank you. Um, I feel it's the number one job of mine to make sure that I build those relationships. It's been a priority of mine since I was elected um two years ago to make sure that my office was taking the calls from residents in Mattapan and across the city. But also connecting them with city services and also making sure that.
Second.
Every that every neighborhood knows that um it doesn't matter what zip code you live in, that the city quality of life issues are the job of your elected officials. So to make sure people know to reach out and for us to do the work of making sure we deliver on that.
Thank you. Uh, candidate Vitali.
Um, I would want to assess the jobs of the neighborhood liaisons and whether or not that system is actually working. Any resident at any time should be able to contact their city councilor and get their issue addressed in a timely manner. Many residents throughout the city have told me that they don't feel like the mayor and the city council are working in their best interest, or they feel like they're being ignored. Our jobs as elected officials would be to serve you, to listen to you and to make every effort necessary to improve the quality of life of the residents. And visitors of Boston, whatever systems and policies aren't working need to be replaced with real solutions.
Thank you. Um, Councilor Mihia.
Yes, so I I think that's a really great question in regards to how we're plugging people in. One of the things that I have learned in the three and a half years that I've been in office is that we have everything at our disposal, but what we don't have is real access to um knowing how to navigate. So I think that we need to do more work in terms of helping people understand what services, city services are supposed to look like. And I think that one of the things that I've been doing is also working with other nonprofit organizations because we are resource rich and coordination poor. And there are a lot of other organizations that are also set up to help support our constituents. So being that um builder between these two worlds.
Thank you. Um, can I send down?
Yeah, so you know, basic city service is top, you know, top priority. Um, as a former city council staffer and you know, as a former director of civic organizing for the city of Boston. Um, you know, I I I've been able to um, you know, build relationships with the different department heads, but not just department heads across the city, but people who are actually picking up your trash. Um, you know, and on the ground doing the work. Um, you know, I'm I'm really looking to leverage those um.
Ten seconds.
Just to make sure that um constituent services is happening. Um, you know, not just in certain neighborhoods, but across all neighborhoods. I'm also proud to have the endorsement of Mayor Wu um in this in in this race. Um, and I'm looking forward to really working alongside station um to address basic city services. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Councilor Lujan.
Thank you. Uh, um, this is a really important question. I really make sure that me and my office show up in neighborhoods when it comes to quality of life issues, when it comes to trash issues, we get dumpsters removed. We get um, uh, absentee landlords fined and we're working on an ordinance in city council to increase the fines. So that uh, there's more at stake for absentee landlords when they let our neighborhoods look like. Um, it's important that we affirm the dignity of all of our residents and that neighborhoods, especially in our black and brown neighborhoods, feel like we have a government that cares about them. So really physically going to where they are, not just relying on three on one um requests, but going to people. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, candidate Brithway.
Thank you for that question. Constituent service would be number one of my priorities. I've been navigating families and even city officials, the connection between city and community. It's very important that we're on top of those topics. And one thing I learned from Rob Casalvo when I was a part of running his campaign for mayor, it was the simple fact, you have to be accountable. And you have to be have access to you. Before you get to my staff, you have the access to me. Thank you. You know, did I lose signal?
Nope, you're all set.
Okay, thank you.
So in other words, that'd be my top priority.
Thank you.
Constituent services.
Thank you. Uh, David.
Yes, uh, we're gonna turn this over. There was a raised hand from the audience, Reggie Stewart. Uh, Mr. Stewart, we'll ask you to please offer your question, uh, please an interesting time, keep it brief. And we'll turn that over to the selected candidates and we'll start with candidate Brithway in response. Uh, Mr. Stewart, floor is yours.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, back in July at the Boston Reparations Task Force Meeting. Uh, former Senator Diane Wilkerson asked for a halt uh to the giving away of vacant lots, the hundred and fifty or so vacant lots under the Welcome Home Boston Pro uh Welcome Home Boston Program. And the logic was because, you know, rightly so, many of these vacant lots exist because the city in the past bulldozed black people's uh houses and businesses. Uh, the black residents that were there seemed to agree. The task force seems to agree. So my question to the city council, uh, yes or no, do you agree? If you do agree, what does advocacy or legislation for that look like? If you don't agree, why?
Hey, thank you so much for that question. And once again, we'll start with candidate Brithway.
Um, I would agree on one aspect that we make sure we're making the right choices on who's getting land. And like you mentioned, a lot of people did get um steamrolled over and they lost their homes. So we have to make sure, without a doubt, the body of the council works together to make sure that we protect the citizens of Boston, to make sure that things in the past do not continue. It's very vital that we make sure that land goes to people who are gonna actually do something for it and better our community. We can talk green spaces, we can talk housing, we can talk parking. But what's very important, we have the last say to make sure that our community is safe and protected. And those things that happened in the past will never happen again.
You, candidate Vitali.
Um, I just wanted to clarify, the question is, do we agree on giving the land to local businesses?
Uh, do you agree on halting uh the mayor's uh plan to give away the lots until the uh task force completes its work and offer recommendations? Because many of those lots that were bulldozed over belonged to black residents uh and their homes and businesses, you know, were uh were bulldozed. So do you agree to pause that until the recommendation uh until the recommendations from the task force come through? Because if you, if it goes forward, the lots may already be gone by the time the task force does its work.
Right, so I definitely um am always against the government stepping in to help a situation. I think that if people are going to use land for businesses, um, they should try to do it. Independent from the government because you're always beholden to their rules and regulations. And at the end of the day, they they make the decisions and. Um, that's probably really hard for a business owner to be controlled like that. So I think that they should push it off and I I would say to just.
Time.
Not work with the government when it comes to your business, period.
And next we'll move to Counselor Mihia.
Um, thank you for that, Reggie, and thank you for your work, working alongside our office to establish the reparations task force. Um, and as someone who's always grounded with working alongside the people, I believe that. Uh, it it's something that I would support. I think that if the community is asking us to slow things down and to create a process in which the reparations task. Performing um what land usage looks like, I think that is a a deliverable of the ordinance in terms of policy recommendations. And so as the lead sponsor of that ordinance, I would love to be able to uphold it.
Uh, next candidate Santana.
Yeah, thank you, Reggie, for this question. Uh, yeah, I think I I I definitely want to be able to advocate on on behalf of this and and definitely uphold this. You know, I think this is an agri, you know, an agri well, um, problem. Uh, want to make sure that um the the work that the task force is being, that is putting in, um, you know, um, that is actually being used. Um, so you know, definitely wo- wo- um, would advocate to uphold this and 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 wait. You know, and wait for the recommendations for the task force to make sure that we're we're being intentional about, um, you know, who who's getting these um properties. Thank you.
And next is Counselor Murphy.
Thank you. Um, yes, and I think it's also important that any past discriminatory practices, we have to acknowledge that. And we also have to use that knowledge for better choices going forward. But I do respect that if the task force feels that their um findings and if they're sharing them out after thing, the land's already given away. That I would absolutely support that we pause giving the land away until we hear from the task force directly to then make a more informed decision on what to do with that land. It is a definitely once in a lifetime opportunity and we can't um, no need to rush it. So, yes.
Candidate Nelson.
Hmm, thank you for your your question. I would say pause it if this is what the community wants and figure out if this land was stolen or not and give it back to the um, the people. I also said, no strings attached from the government. So again, anything that they hand out to you is gonna have some kind of regulations or restrictions on it that usually doesn't benefit us, the local people. But um, I would make sure that only Boston reticents have access to that land, not developers, not special um interest groups outside of the city. So again, this should be paused and be listened to by the um constituents.
Thank you, and Counselor Lujan.
Thank you. I look forward to, I think I'm I'm gonna be meeting with the um task force soon. And I think it's really important for us to understand that the work of reparations is about correcting for past harm, as is the work of equity, right? And so it means that i- i- in the in the way that you repair is through material, is is at least in part through um ma- a ma- a material response, right? Whether it's land, whether it's money. And so one of our greatest assets as a city is the land that we own.
Second.
We need to um really survey what do we want the byproduct, the outcome of this reparations task force to be? And it has to be material and it has to include some land.
Thank you. Uh, Fatima.
Thank you. Um, this next cash question is around uh mass and cast. What is your take or insight on this major problem? And what would be your remedies or your recommendations for dealing with it? And we're gonna start with um Counselor Murphy.
Um, so this week, nine years ago, is when the bridge closed down and I've been strong closely connected with it since then. When a loved one was put in a cab and taken out of detox and recovery because they were shutting down Long Island. So l- l- long before I became an elected official, I have been strong supporter and advocate for recovery services. And we are, I'm gonna run out of time, I know I am, but just please visit my website or let's have conversations. It's a humanitarian crisis, we have to address those suffering. We have to also address the business owners, the residents and make sure the illegal activity stops. So those who do need support can get it. But thank you for the question.
Thank you. Uh, candidate Nelson.
Thank you for the question. Um, this is at home because I'm actually a fifteen minute walk from Mass and Cast, so I actually witness it a lot. I actually post on like the needles. So this is a last question, so it's not gonna be answered in thirty minutes. But basically is, we need to identify what is the problem and what is the solution? What do we already have in in our toolbox and what can we add? First of all, I would unquickly say is stop giving out rockets to the homeless, looking at for fact, while this bridge has been outdone, you could have easily had gotten a ferry. So again, coming to the table, having these discussions and making sure what we have in the toolbox is working, using the laws, using law enforcement. And uh, everything that we have at our disposal.
Thank you, Tom. Um. Uh. I'm sorry. Uh, Counselor Mihia.
Uh, yes, in regards to mass and cast, I feel like I'm stuck in the twilight zone because we keep having the same conversation. And the only thing that changes are the characters that are in front of us. I think when it comes to mass and cast, we need to also look at accountability within the Attorney General's Office, right? This has to be a statewide issue. We can't keep believing and thinking that the city is going to hold all of this. We need to really decentralize um services. And again, looking at even some of the doctors that are prescribing and getting our loved ones hooked. I think that that is also part of the co- conversation is a capability.
Thank you. Uh, candidate Vitali.
Um, as I said earlier, many of my friends and family members have struggled with opioid addiction. I've been homeless because the father of my children is an addict. Um, I have so much compassion for the people living at at Mass and Cast and also for the people that have to walk through it or drive by. It's an open drug market, drug deals and crime are happening right in front of the police and no actions taken. Needles and human feces are in the parks, the kids can't play football. And um, we can't wait five years for the bridge to be built to the island, we should have a ferry to the island and.
Time.
Um, section thirty five, the people that are in the streets.
Thank you. Um, candidate Brithway.
Thank you for this question. Um, Long Island Bridge, this is a health crisis. We need the governor to make a state of emergency. You look across the United States, we have one thing a lot of other states. We have one thing a lot of other states don't have. We have a parcel of land where we can protect them and we can get the resources that they need to be saved. We have to get on top of this and tackle it. And it takes you, the constituents, the voters, and all of us collectively coming together to force the state level, to force this, to make sure that we can do it. This is not a Boston issue. This is a humanity issue. And other towns should be fronting some of the bill for the ones that are here that we observe. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, candidate Santana.
Yeah, so my approach, I mean, I I, you know, I I understand the uh visibility that housing creates. So that's my approach, housing first, housing is a human right. Um, and you know, with that, with that stability, really improve on the mental um health services, um, that you know, that that we have provided in that area. Um, I live very close to Mass and Cast, so I have to, you know, drive or take the um MBTA to
Ten seconds.
Well, I also think that we really need to work with our um with our state and federal um officials to make sure that um, you know, true investments are being put in here and that we're working collaboratively um to readdress this issue, not just here in the city of Boston, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you, David.
And so we are going to turn this over because in the interest of time and there are some folks who
I didn't get to answer that question, by the way, but it's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, councillor Loosian, please.
My god, I'm so sorry, councillor Loosian.
That just wanted to make sure folks had Does that mean I get a minute? No, just kidding. Um, I think that mass and cast, we need to make sure that um it's where it's housing and treatment. We need to make sure that folks are more likely to go see a doctor, to more likely to go see a psychiatrist. They have a stable place to call home. And also, we need to work with the state to increase treatment options and treatment beds. Um, the thirty days, uh thirty days of treatment um often isn't enough, extending that to ninety days. So that's really an important part of the work. Um, I think that we can't divorce the two. And we also need to be, go go after those who are preying on people who are most vulnerable, who in the mass and cast area.
Thank you so much, councillor. Sorry about that. Uh, nobody pitches a perfect game, I guess. But we will turn it over for another question from those with their hands raised. Uh, so next we'll go to Samuel Pierce. Uh, once again, we ask folks, please uh make your question brief so we can have as much time as possible for responses. Sam, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Um, everyone who's here on the call. My question really has to do with the fact that um not all of the resources in Boston have been equitable. So my question is, what would your plan be if elected to solve the problem of low voter turnout and low graduation rates? Um, in some areas of the district compared to the rest of the city? And is there a correlation between high crime rates with the fact that there are um lack of resources with public high schools um here in the city? So that was basically my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. I will start with candidate Nelson.
Thank you for the question. So again, this is something that's not gonna be answered in in thirty seconds, but it is a mixture of home life. It's a mixture of schooling, it's a mixture of hope and, you know, dreams, showing that if you're not going to school, you're hanging on the street, you're hanging out in the street, you're hanging out with the wrong crowd. And sometimes it's getting your hustle to just survive or it's just showing off in front of your friends and then, you know, getting caught up in into that kinda lifestyle. It's also showing that people need to come out and vote because people are disparate, because like, things are going on in the city. You you speak up about it and nothing's getting done for years and years and years over and over again. So this is disparate, it's making sure that we are going out and lifting these hopes of people by actually going to the meetings, asking answering their questions and actually getting stuff done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to candidate Santana.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I'm I'm a real example of what happens um when the when the city truly invests in its youth. Um, I really wanna make sure that um, you know, these opportunities are that opportunities that were given to me um are are distributed across the city for people who look like me, come from different backgrounds like me. Um, you know, I also, I think representation really matters. Um, so you know, as a product of public housing, as a black man, uh
Ten seconds.
I I wanna make sure that, you know, I'm I I I'm reaching out to to those communities, making sure that they know they have a candidate that they can um rely on. Um, and that, you know, that they know they they can call. So, you know, I that's why I'm running. I really wanna be um, yeah, thank you.
Uh, candidate Vitala.
Boston Public Schools math and reading scores are failing. Um, that's a huge part of the issue because when a when a kid is not um excelling in school, they're not interested in it and they're, they they don't wanna be there. We need to make school um fun. We need to make sure the kids are actually learning. We need to stop focusing on mental health and turning our schools into clinics. We need to make sure that they're learning academics and we need more vocational programs in schools.
Thank you. Candidate Braithwaite.
Bottom line, we have to make the schools exciting. We have to reach the children where they're at. We have to see the issues and the problems that they're dealing. We need to work on mental health because in our community, mental health is something new to us in the last ten to twenty years that we speak about it probate them all the time. And when it comes to voting, we have to make it exciting. We we have too many outside interest groups that pay just before the election comes out to give you ballot questions. We need to dive deep into these questions and have community engagement on a weekly and monthly basis. That's what my administration will bring to the office.
This is councillor Mihia. Councillor Mihia, can you hear us?
Sorry, um, David, this is when I was gonna be transitioning, so I uh missed the question. I, it seems like it's about the schools and young people and civic engagement and mental health, but I wanna answer the correct question. Can you ask, ask it again, please?
Yeah, it was from Sam Pierce. Sam, do you mind uh me stating the question for councillor?
Absolutely. Um, councillor Mihia, I was just asking very briefly, what would your plan be um as an incumbent to solve the problem of low ver- voter turnout and low graduation rates in some areas of the city? Um, and if there's a correlation between high crime rates and the fact that there are no public high schools in some of the areas where we see the most crime?
Okay, that's a lot of questions for thirty seconds, but I'm gonna try to unpack Sam as much as I can. You know, my office is really proud to uh, you know, have had uh shepherded the uh home rule petition to lower the voting age for sixteen to seventeen years because it takes us six years to turn a non-voter into a super voter. So civic engagement is really um important to getting young people started in civics earlier. And then secondly, in of just, you know, I was one of those chronically absent kids. I was in school, which is one of the reasons why I dropped out. And I think what we need to see more of in our Boston Public Schools is pathways. I love um David, when you're running for office, uh my lord, okay. David has good ideas, y'all. I'm just letting y'all know.
Thank you. It's very kind. Uh, next councillor Murphy.
Thank you for this question, Sam. I think there's definitely a direct correlation between quality schools and crime and civic engagement. Um, I've been a strong advocate for decades now, making sure that our children, no matter what zip code they live in, what school they get that every high school, every middle school, but it starts all the way down in kindergarten, is a great school. And it's about equitable access to making sure that every school has before and after school programming, more sports, music, arts. Um, it comes down to hope to me. If kids feel that they're cared for and they're getting a great education, they feel hope, then they'll be more civically engaged. And that's our job as elected officials, to make sure that happens for everyone.
Apparently councillor Loosian.
This is my first reelection and I've worked a lot as a lawyer on democracy and just as a citizen on democracy building work. And it's sad to me that this is gonna be a low turnout election because it's not resource intensive. There's no one running for mayor. The monies are, the money isn't in it, but local policies are the most important if you care about our schools, policing our parks. And so it's on us and our campaigns, but we do need as a city to invest more in education about upcoming elections. Also, we are a very wealthy city with a triple A bond rating that is prosperity, that is not shared with our neighborhoods. And we're talking about the work of prevention, preventing crimes. We are talking about strong, stable neighborhoods with good quality, new infrastructure for our schools, with parks that are worthy of our dignity, with housing that is stable and homeownership opportunities. That's what it looks like li- using our resources, which is our financial health, a state of meds and ads. How we using that wealth, the wealth of these institutions to do our work for the working class folks, for the black and brown folks that are too often left behind.
What, Fatima?
Okay, thanks. Um, this question is around the um around the fix, around finding quali- qualified contractors to fix facilities used by the public. The Mildred Ave Community Center gym floor was reported with pictures in March of twenty twenty-two. In April of twenty twenty-two, the damaged floor and stadium seats were removed. The community center had to court it off the area with a barrier and padding to protect the children in their programs. During the early election in twenty twenty-two, it was reported again to elected officials, the mayor's office and to the chief of operations. Each said they would report it to BPS. To make a long story short, to date, the floor has not been fixed. Residents coming to vote and children in programs are still not presented with a safe floor to be used. What would you do to prevent such lengthy waiting to provide a safe facility? To start, we're going to go with councillor Loosian.
Thank you. And when I, I thought that this issue had actually been addressed and I'm sad to know it hasn't. So I will, uh, my office will uh work together with the administration to figure out how quickly we can get this fixed. My niece just started at uh the Mildred K through eight and uses a community center. It's something that is really deeply important to me to make sure that um every community center in every neighborhood feels like the city cares about them. So um we'll be working to address this issue and thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you. Um, candidate Vitala.
Um, I think it's really interesting that massive developments are popping up all over the city. But we have dozens of public facilities, including schools, pools and gyms that are being pushed off or ignored. Um, I think it's because the government doesn't profit off of public facilities, but they do profit off of big developments. This is why I'll say again, we need to put a hard stop on overdevelopment and no more developments until all public facilities are in working condition and safe for public, public access.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Mihia.
Um, have you, actually, last year, our office worked alongside councillor Coletta and councillor Louise Jen was also one of our co-sponsors on the quality pool. It was an a public facility that had been neglected by the city. And I think, you know, I agree with my council colleagues in terms of really understanding that we have not only, I think this is what we need to do. Bottom line is, we need to do a full assessment and audit and looking at this through a a lot and and uh not only just pausing on development, but making sure that we're holding ourselves accountable to ensuring that all of our facilities are up to par. There's no reason why our kids should be in school that have crumbling walls or pools that are not open. These are our tax dollars and we need to hold ourselves accountable to those dollars.
Thank you very much. Um. Uh, candidate Nelson.
Thank you for the question. Um, it's really appalling that something that was already reported and nothing gets done. This is the red tape that we see in the government. If it's nothing that they're really interested in, they're not gonna go fix. If this was at city hall, it would have been fixed right away. Cause this is where delegates, people of interest comes to see the city. It really shows the lack of caring for the community. That should have been fixed right away. And as a candidate, uh as um someone who is running, I would be basically personally going there and going to everything. Everyone's doing friendly. Why hasn't it been fixed? It should have been fixed within a couple of days that it was reported. But this shows like those who are already in power, but you don't care that you have people who are already in the office and now you're just now learning about this. It should have been taken care of right away when it happened.
Thank you. Candidate Santana.
Yeah, um, community centers are foundational to the success of our communities. Uh, I I, growing up, I attended um, you know, the Alice Taylor Johnson Community Center and the Tobin Community Center and um, you know, had a lot of um resources offered to me there. Um, as a young candidate in this race, I'm I'm really um trying to be representative of the next generation that's coming. Um, so this is something that I absolutely um will um, you know, address and make sure advertise and and work with um elected officials, the city council and the mayor's administration to make sure that um, you know, the these processes are are expediated and and making sure that um community is at the, that's at the front of the door. So um, thank you very much for the question.
Thank you. Um, councillor Murphy.
Thank you. Um, this is one of the most um concerning parts of my job. There's several examples like this, but I remember when I was advocating for all our BCYF pools and facilities to be ready and open. Last summer, the photos of this um community center at Mildred Ave were shared around. And the same thing happened. We're going on one year when I've been trying to advocate for a bus ramp to be fixed at English High or the playground at the Warren Scott that should have been done. And one thing that is frustrating to me, but I'll continue to advocate for the quality of life of residents in every neighborhood is that the administration then oftentimes looks at you as being a troublemaker or trying to call out departments. But at the end of the day, we, they need to do their job, especially in issues like this that directly affect our neighbors, our residents. So thank you for the question.
Um, candidate Braithwaite.
Thank you for this question. I always get right to the meat and potatoes and I talk to the people who it affects the most. We have to get better staffing. We have to have leadership that really gets it throughout the um Boston Public Schools or any programs dealing in our city. We have to get better wages for the workers. Why would they wanna work tirelessly, don't get overtime, haven't got a pay increase? Why would they even invest in back into the schools? And our pools, it's it's atrocious. We have to really work. And there's no excuse with this body that's gonna be in office collectively working together, that we're gonna make the mistakes of the past. We're gonna become one body, one unit to effectively help the constituents in our city, period. Hands down. Thank you.
Thank you. David.
Yes, uh, and this is gonna be our final question before we turn it over for final remarks from our candidates. Uh, we know that there are folks with hands raised and others were asking, uh, if anybody does have a question, please put it in the chat so that we can make sure that we can send it to the candidates and get written responses, which will also be posted on the GMNC website. Uh, so our final question is also gonna be schools related, uh, really school governance related. And it's one that's been a topic, a lot of conversation over the last few years. And that is specific to an elected Boston School Committee. Uh, if you do agree with an elected Boston School Committee, what will you do as a city councillor to work to bring it back? And if you don't agree with an elected Boston School Committee, why not? Uh, and what are your concerns? And for this, we will start with councillor Loosian.
Thank you, David. Um, I am in support of an elected school committee. We are the only city in the Commonwealth to not have an elected school committee. It is not the solve. It's not gonna be the thing that's gonna make our um schools better. But it does infuse more transparency and more um accountability into our decision-making process. You know, I I I was continuing to be worried about the role of money in our elections and outside influence. But I do think that the people should have the power in this instance and be able to elect their school committee, which is why I voted in support on the city council for the elected school committee.
Thank you, councillor. And next candidate Vitala.
In twenty twenty-one, we voted seventy-eight percent in favor of an elected committee. The reason why we don't have it is because the mayor is against an elected committee. And she made this hybrid phase-in plan that's like over the course of four years. And um, she wants, she wants to make it like half elected, half appointed. Um, but since we've already waited almost three years, I think that we should have a school committee election in twenty twenty-four. And then a new election every year until we're satisfied enough to give them a two-year term.
Thank you. And next we count, uh, excuse me, candidate Braithwaite.
Thank you for this question. Seventy-six to seventy-nine percent of the voters wanted an elected school committee, and I'm one of those voters. We have to dive right down to the meat and potatoes and we have to look at it this way. Let the elections department handle that the voting elected. That's what I would bring to the table. However it work, however we can put it together, because what scares me when you have an elected school committee, which I'm with, the powers that have more money, just like in this election, if you have more money, your message gets out there. I'm afraid that we will lose quality people who are really concerned about our school. So I say we putting on the um e- e- elected um elected school committee I'm with and we find a way that we can protect it so there's no one can have more money in the race to get their message out there.
That's uh candidate Santana.
Thanks, David. Yeah, I'm I'm in support of an elected school committee. Um, I think this will create, um, again, bring power back to um to the community and and making sure that um there's a engagement um piece there. Making sure that they know they have a voice in 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 our schools. Um, you know, I'm looking forward to really working with, um, you know, elected with the city councillors and the mayor's administration to make this happen. Uh, and I echo um the concerns that um have been brought up by um people on the on the call, making sure that um, you know, who has has access to these positions, um, and making sure that um, you know, it's a, that's an equitable process. But I am in support of an uh of an elected school committee. Thank you.
Next will be councillor Mihia.
Uh, you already know I am all in. I actually, my office was the co-sponsor uh in passing the home rule petition so that we could have an elected school committee. In fact, not only did we shepherd that through the council So that we could have an elected school committee. In fact, not only did we shepherd that through the council, um, legislative process, but we. Also worked in community, making sure that we were educating community in multiple languages so that families and parents and those. Who are stakeholders understood what we were fighting for. So I believe that. After we've done our job and it died, um, in the mayor's office, and I think that it's a telltale sign in terms of the the type of. Voices that are being heard and not so much so. And I think an an elected school committee is the only way for us to have real justice in our Boston Public Schools.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson.
Yes, I full hundred percent go with the, um, elected school board. It's the way it gives the parents. More of a voice of what's going on in their schools to be fine now. If you're not going to do your job right, we'll just vote you out. Um, the fact that the mayor is trying to hold on to these positions because again. They don't report to the parents. They report to Mayor Wu when she appoints them, not to and they're they're not held accountable. So again, I do fully, um, support elected school committee. And we need to remind you that the council has not, the current council has not really pushed this issue with the mayor. Remember, they work for us, not the mayor.
And finally councillor Murphy.
Thank you. Um, I have gone on record to say that I did think that it overwhelmingly passed because when the voters went to the ballot. There was a question and for me, the answer was, we're not happy with the current situation. And if this is an option to change it. I do think if there were other options on the ballot question, it may not have passed overwhelmingly, but that being said, I do think that. An appointed school committee continues to give too much power to the mayor's side, but then does not hold accountable. I hear time and time again from residents or concerned school parents that. They don't even know who their school committee members are or how to get in touch with them. I've invited some of them to council hearings. And they say to me, well, that's not something we do. So I do think, um, an elected school committee is where we need to go to make sure the schools are held accountable. Thank you.
Fatima.
Okay, uh, it does, it looks pretty close to time.
Yeah, so we're gonna, I think we're gonna move on to our final statements. Uh, once again, we are asking our candidates to limit to one minute. Uh, and before we do that, just a quick bit of housekeeping, just so folks remember. Election Day is going to be on Tuesday, November seventh, and the final day for registration. The deadline is October twenty eighth. So make sure that you're registered. Make sure you check your registration, particularly with redistricting. To make sure that you're still voting for the same district that you might have been, or you might have been moved, as that has happened in a few precincts in Greater Matapan. Uh, with that, we are going to go back to our candidates here and we will begin with candidate Vitali. One minute.
Thank you. Um, so I'm just a regular person. I am not interested in becoming a career politician. I'm not interested in moving up. In political office. I want to help the people of Boston. I never saw myself running for, um, elected office. I was not. I did not care about politics up until a couple of years ago, when I started to see how it really does affect. The lives of everyday people like us. And the only reason why I'm running for office is because I. Don't, I I don't see any changes happening for the better. Um, I see. The people are not being listened to. They're being ignored by their elected officials. And I I want to help. I don't see anybody else stepping up that genuinely wants to help the people, so I I'm gonna try to do it myself.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll go to candidate Braithwaite.
Thank you very much, committee, and thank you, everyone who's on this call, and especially thank you to for to the other candidates. Who have made me step my A game up to the next level. I appreciate each one of you. This is what, um, solidarity and community working together would look like. My platform is very simple. It was centered around community, equality and justice and transformation. I believe that all residents have the right, no matter what level they come from, have the right to get good education. Of a decent place to live, safety and so many other things that we all speak about. But at the end of the day, it's about digging in deep and working for the people would be such an honor for me. Other people look at this as a job. I will always say it to keep it simple for the young people and for for our elders. This is lived life experience and an opportunity for me to serve our community. It would never be a job to me. I hope everybody gets together and one thing that I bring to the table and I'll end it here is. I believe we're one body, we're one mind. Each candidate on here has specialties and we should be able to work together for a better Boston. Thank you for the opportunity and thank you, everyone, and God bless you.
Uh, next we'll go with candidate Santana.
Uh, thanks, David. Thanks, Fatima. Thanks to Greater, um, Matapan councillor for hosting us here today. Again, my name is Henry Santana and I humbly ask for one of your four votes, um, to be your next Boston City Councillor at Large. I am again, a a a product of the city, um, product of our Boston Public Schools, um, public housing here in the city of Boston. And I have a unique experience of having worked on a city council, um, as a staffer and then in the mayor's administration. Um, and combining that with my lived experience of growing up here in the city of Boston, I believe I I am best positioned to really, um, you know, take on to. Take on this level, uh, to be your next Boston City Councillor at Large. I really want to be able to, um, plug in, you know, if you really believe in this movement. And want to help, um, create, um, you know, over the next thirty days and help me get elected, please visit my website, henrysantana.com. Um, you know, we have weekly, multiple campuses a week, phone banks.
Ten seconds.
And we know we'd really, um, love your support in in this race. So thank you again for for everyone who who tuned in today. Um, and I'm looking forward to connecting with you all down the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Mahia.
Yes, uh, good afternoon again. Thank you, everyone, for your active participation because this is what democracy looks like. Um, I can always expect to have a good turnout and also a very lively debate when I know Fatima is on the helm. Facilitating and regulating. So thank you, um, David, too, for bringing us together and convening. You know, I say this is like I, this is my purpose in life. I had, I I live to serve and I serve to live. Um, and the good thing about me is is that, you know, while I may be an incumbent, I'm still very, I'm still very much an outsider. You know, I I am deeply centered in lifting up the voices of the people and the only people who can take me out are the ones that put me in. Which gives me a sense of freedom, right? And that I can lead with centering the voices of the people. I have done so. Many of the initiatives that I've led through my office, we've discussed here today. So I'm a proven leader and the next term. What I'd like to utilize is my award-winning personality to bring people together across their differences, because that's the one area I I believe. That we need to do better of here in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Candidate Nelson.
Yes, thanks to the council for having me today. Um, again, I'm just a regular person running for office. I see the disparity that that's going on in the city as someone who's been born and raised there. Um, as someone who's becoming an advocate, um, I have seen what the current council does. When you don't agree with them, they do annoy you. They don't answer your phone calls. They only show up when it's time for a photo shoot. We have a lot of issues showing up and, you know, and if they usually show up, it's just to to grab your votes. Um, I'm just a regular person. I see what goes on. I I love my city and I want to make sure that it grows for everyone, not just selected people, but for everybody. And I I hope people when it comes to the election that you see my name, Sean Nelson, and give me your vote. And remember, you can vote for one more person and remember. Even if I don't win, please, people, if you really love about Boston. Step up and and run for election. Don't let these elected people continue running supposedly claiming to represent us. Remember, we are the people. Not the other way around. So even if I don't get elected, please, I hope people. Running for them for themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Murphy.
Thank you. And thank you to Fatima and David for moderating. It's been a wonderful couple hours together. But, um, as as many of you know, I'm Aaron Murphy, I'm running for reelection and I do humbly ask for your support on November seventh. Or if you're mailing in your ballot, which we know many more people are doing, or early voting. Um, over the past two years, it's been an honor to serve all of the neighborhoods across the city of Boston. And I do believe that I have a record of results during my time here on the council. It's been short, but I've been dedicated to delivering. Like tangible results for all of our neighborhoods. I've been advocating for our schools, safer streets, the cost of housing. And definitely constituent service, delivering on constituent services is important. I'm a strong advocate for education, affordable housing, public safety, accessibility and transparency. I think, um. I definitely have filed the vote seventeen Fs on the council this year because I really want the answers to be able to lead. With the, um, information needed, but I'll end by saying that I do think my unique experience, um. As a single mom educator, uh, raising my kids here in the city of Boston and now, um. Went from being a kindergarten teacher to a councillor, I do ask for your support and ask for one of your four votes on November seventh. So thank you.
And finally councillor Luja.
Thank you so much and thank you, David, and thank you, Fatima, for, um, this forum. I, this is a twenty-four seven hour job for me. I really care about each and every person in the city of Boston. Each and every neighborhood. As a black girl who grew up in Matapan, I would have never imagined. That this would be part of my story, that I get to wake up and serve all of you. And I'm just, I'm fortunate. These issues are hard and sometimes we're not going to agree on everything. But how can we find common ground? You know, I think about my story, my parents, immigrants from Haiti. I think about me as a BPS student. Then going off to Harvard Law School. That should be a story that all of our kids can have. It should be a normal story. And I think that we need to continue to fight for the city that we deserve, that the next generation deserves. That means affordable housing. That means, um. Environmental justice, trees in all of our neighborhoods. That means a fun, inclusive and equitable city where we get things wrong, we make them right. We, again, we have such a wealthy city with so many rich institutions. All of our kids and all of our neighborhoods need to feel that I believe in the city and I believe in our possibility. And I ask for your vote on November seventh to continue doing your work in city hall and in the streets of Boston. Thank you, everyone. Messy empty.
Thank you so much. Uh, so thank you to all of our wonderful candidates for taking the time and caring about our community here in Greater Matapan and our concerns. Uh, please join me in giving them a round of applause for taking their time being out here on a day when they have so much to do. As was stated, there's just a few more weeks until election day. So please, first and foremost, make sure you're registered to vote. Make sure you exercise your, uh, you know, your opportunity and your right to vote. The vote and the right that so many folks fought very long and hard for. Uh, this is the kind of government, municipal government that is closest to the people. That you experience the most directly each and every day. So it's critically, critically important. That we have, you know, good folks in there, uh, whomever you decide to support. Uh, once again, I thank you so much for all of you for being here, for those who returned and there's been some questions in the chat. This will be posted up. It'll be on the GMNC website. And once again, if you have those questions that like candidates answer that weren't able to get to in the time today. We'll make sure that we pass this along and get those written responses up just as well. Um, I will turn it over to Fatima to close us out. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, David. Thank you again, all candidates for showing up today. Really appreciate you giving your time, uh, to the community here. Uh, as David said, please do show up at the polls, um, on November seventh, whether it be by mail and ballot or in person. Both are still, uh, available to you. If you haven't registered to vote, you have until October twenty eighth. Um, and last but not least, um, even though Monday is a holiday, the GMNC is holding a, um. We've been asked to hold a meeting for the White Stadium presentation. There is a link that we posted for those who wish to participate and listen to the presentation as well as discussions around community benefits. Uh, with that said, also, I'd like to thank our facilitator, Angel Howe, who jumped on at last minute to help facilitate. Um, the participation room. Much appreciated. And thank you again, everyone, for showing up and giving part of your Saturday over to us. Um, I look forward to seeing you at other GMNC meetings and as usual, I love you all, but you gotta go.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you.
Good day. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a wonderful weekend, all. Thank you.
Thank you, Greater Matapan neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you for showing up.
Add me to your voter list. I forgot to ask you also. Make sure you keep me in mind, too.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Leah.